I am calling the meeting of March fourteenth to order, looking for a motion to establish the agenda.
So.
Seconded and all in favor indicate by saying aye. Students? And board? That any opposed? Motion passes two zero five zero. Superintendent report?
Great, thank you. A few things this evening for my report. The first is just a couple of things, some reminders. Twenty eight, so two weeks from tonight, we have a study session that will start, and that'll start at four o'clock. And that's really when you'll hear even more, the agenda item that's coming up for, I believe it's two A tonight. Will kind of be the the kickstart, but we'll spend a lot of time as a board in a study session regarding facilities and and planning. So just a reminder for calendars there. A couple of things, I wanted to read just some things from a former student rep on our board. Andrew Howison, he had an update to us that we like to provide along the way. He said, I will finish my freshman year of college in the next several months. I had a lot of fun and of course put in a lot of work. I know that Dr. Rundle and Dr. Booby knew I was doing ROTC, but I don't know if everyone else did. Anyway, I decided to try new things over the summer and signed up for ROTC. I have loved it so much and loved the leadership aspect of it. I started competing to see if I could be commissioned as an officer, and thanks to all of your help and especially Dr. Booby. I got medically cleared to continue ROTC. I then competed against fifteen other freshmen and academics, fitness and extracurriculars. And just found out this afternoon that I got a three-year full ride scholarship for ROTC at Gonzaga. And he goes on to say that while this is good news for me, the email is about how prepared I felt for my first year of college. And how I got my scholarship. I feel that while Gonzaga students are passionate about what they do and involve themselves in the work. Mercer Island prepared me and motivated me to be more passionate and involve myself more than the average Gonzaga student. My master's sergeant at school called me stubborn and tenacious, and I feel I learned my stubborn and tenaciousness. Yet caring and respectful character from my time on the school board. And he goes on from there. So update from one of our students. Couple other things just kind of out there right now. You know, I I think we're going to continue to see some of this in the region quite a bit. I saw a news headline out of a school district down in Southern Washington where they're looking at cuts in the, you know, tens of millions of dollars. I was, I I know that that there's challenging decisions that have to be made, but I know it's, we're all thinking about students and programs. And even in our own region with one of our school districts right here in the Puget Sound region just to our north. You know, facing a twenty-six million dollar hole in their budget. And some tough decisions of having to eliminate things like the fifth grade band and orchestra. And having to close schools, reduce middle school athletics. You know, that weighs heavily on all of us as educators and I know as parents and.
You're talking about in that other district?
In the other district. And I think it reminds me of a couple of things, and that is one. There's been a lot of work done at the board table over the last year or so to really change our trajectory too. We had talked and Director Sullivan oftentimes says, you know, we're kind of at that bow wave. Where we were getting hit by a lot of budget challenges on the front end. And, you know, during COVID, when we did not receive those S or dollars. We had to turn to our fund balance to kind of work through and in different boards. We're making decisions, but we're on the upswing now. And I feel fortunate that we're talking about and Director Battersby and Director Adams will talk in a moment about, you know, the update on where we're headed with the RIF, but our reductions are so much smaller. It's not that they're not hard. We're still talking about people, but having reductions that are so much smaller and to have made a lot of the corrections. When we did and how we did gives me great hope that we can continue on a trajectory where we're not cutting programs. Out of OSPI this week, we received our Washington School Improvement Framework kind of report card. They put these out and this will be made public for all school districts coming up. But they basically take a lot of our SBA scores or our ELL testing scores. Those big state kind of measurements. And they then start to identify your school as to what kind of assistance do you need? Tier three, tier two, tier one, or if you're just foundational. And they not only look at you as a school district, and they look at each school. And then within each school, they look at your subpopulations. How are your ELL students doing? How are students with disabilities doing? And I'm pleased to report that next week when it's published. And you'll see Mercer Island, that every single school and every single category this year is foundational. That we don't have any glaring gaps and things. And so we've closed some gaps over the years where we've had some in the past, but while it's not the be all end all, anytime we're seeing, you know, progression from our schools and that our students are still doing well. Particularly coming out of COVID, I think it's worth noting. So you'll see that likely coming out of OSPI next week. When that comes through. With that, I do want to turn it over and there is a short presentation on this section of the agenda hand drews. I'm going to turn it over. It's inside of my report. Going to turn it over to Director Battersby and Director Adams. Over the next two meetings in particular, but I wanted this to be kind of a prelude. We'll start talking more formally as I've been updating you about what reductions enforced. We're going to need to make at the high school and the capacity to do so. And so tonight is just kind of an overview and a reminder about the different timelines and logistics. Involved and how we're kind of tackling this. Then on the twenty eighth, we'll come to you with the first reading for a resolution. And then we'll come back to you on April eighteenth with the final resolution and updated numbers. High school just finished their course registration last week, so they're still putting together. You know, the, all of the different courses that are, will be running next year. So that's why it's, you know, we're not ready tonight, but we'll be ready later on. So let me turn it over to the two of you.
All right, you're comfortable with that staying here?
Yes.
Okay. So Aaron Battersby, the exec director of compliance, legal affairs and human resources, and with me I have Kay Adams, the director of finance. And really the objective today, especially since we have some new people on the board and we have community members as well who may not have been here last year. Or we've had these conversations in the past, is to discuss what is a RIF? What is the board's role in that? What are they actually proving as? Superintendent Rundle, sorry, said earlier that we'll be bringing different drafts of a resolution, a RIF resolution. So what that is and sort of why, why we'd be looking at the high school. So that's sort of an overview of what we're we're doing today. So a RIF versus RIF authority. So RIF stands for reduction in force. It's sort of the process of just increasing the number of staff positions due to a valid organizational reason. Typically that's a financial reason, such as budgetary constraints, which in schools typically is linked to enrollment changes or declines. Or if there's program adjustments, so you no longer have a specific program. Often again, it's related to enrollment declines or at least enrollment in that program and shifts in educational priorities. Those are some of the reasons that you concede RIFs. What we've seen in our district is we've had program adjustments specifically in the most recent past with the elimination of Spanish at the elementary level. And then because of enrollment declines and other reasons, we had budgetary constraints that forced us to basically try to align our staffing. More closely with the revenue we get because households are funded is on a per student FTE basis. So it's not headcount, it's based on FTE. And so if you see a decline in enrollment, you see a decline in your revenue. Which we have to try to make sure our revenue and staffing match. So that's why enrollment and staffing have to match. The importance is that it's by FTE, not headcount. Because if you have partially enrolled students, you're not fully getting funded or not capturing the motion code if that student had been a full-time person. As I said, their RIF authority is what we seek from the district, from the board. So we are working against a statutory deadline where we have to give a notice to our certificate and staff numbers by May fifteenth. That they are going to be representatives, their their job is going to be eliminated. So we're working backwards from that. And so we seek authority from the board. That doesn't mean we have to exercise the full authority. So let's say we saw three FTE from the board and that was authorized. It could be that we don't actually exercise that full authority. Or what is very common, and if you look at any literature in recent past, or go back to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nine reductions across the region. Or RIFs across the region in K twelve schools, is that you end up delivering RIF notices. And as enrollment comes back or changes in funding, then you bring those people back. That's not to say, again, to Superintendent Rundle's point, these are all people. These are my friends, these are my colleagues. This is a really hard thing to have to do. And it's hard for you as a board and it's hard for the community to hear because these are valuable teachers who contribute to the educational environment that our kids experience. But at the same time, we have to have a fiscally sustainable system. So that sort of RIF versus RIF authority just gives us the opportunity to make the reduction. A sort of message by Superintendent Rundle. We are primarily looking at Mercer Island High School for RIF authority, since we anticipate that going to be the area of need. That's that's because the high school is seeing enrollment decline. And we already made adjustments at the elementary, because if you recall in the past couple of years, we've been looking at more elementary and middle school. That's where we've seen more reductions than at the high school. We have made some staffing adjustments, but they've been slow. So while there's been some staffing adjustments at the high school, we haven't adjusted it enough. And we also have very low staff attrition across the district, but particularly in the high school in this year. So ultimately, we're looking at probably three to three point two FTE, which that equates to fifteen class sections. As Superintendent Rundle shared, that's not a lot compared to other districts, but it is just as meaningful. And these are people and we're a smaller system. So I'm going to turn over to Kay, who's going to really explain why the high school.
If you look at the chart we provided, look at the eighth graders. The eighth graders that are moving up to the high school are only three hundred and eight FTE. The seniors that are leaving are three hundred and fifty-four. So right there is a big gap. Plus, that's one of the reasons if you see the jumps. We do get ninth graders coming in back from private school, but that average is about twenty. It's not going to make up the gap. And if you want to go to the next slide? I wanted to provide you a history for the last three years on the high school, and this is one of our issues. In twenty-one, twenty-two, yes, we kept the staffing high because it was the first year back from COVID. And it was a decision to keep that staff to help those students. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we missed the budget again by twenty-one point two-three FTE. And ALD stayed right wing with two FTE extra. This year, the high school is down by forty-two point seven-six FTE from budget. So that's approximately four hundred and fifty thousand in revenue that we didn't receive, we're not going to receive, that we were planning on. So with that decline this year of forty-two. And with the difference between the eighth and the ninth, eighth graders and seniors leaving. We are going to see about an eighty FTE difference in budget from this year to next year. Because we're budgeting thirteen fifty-four in basic education and seventeen in ALD.
And just a quick reminder, I think two things that are important to remember is while high school, and it's been a little tricky trying to get the new normal for high school, but while it's been under, just as a reminder where you've seen your budget reports as to why it's reporting as neutral, is because our middle school and our elementaries have been up. And so that's why we're hitting that thirty-eight eighty, which was our budgeted FTE. Where Kay is focusing now on high school, remember that elementary and middle school are up. So we're actually hitting all of our numbers and we're not in deficit there.
And then if you want to go to the next slide, that's why we're estimating FTE of difference of about eighty FTE at the high school. Which does calculate out to about three, three, full-time position to three point two, because an average class is about twenty-five students. The decline also happens in between tenth and eleventh grade because students choosing to go to running start. So you just can't roll all the tenth graders up, which is an excellent opportunity for students to do running start and start their college early. And that is one area too. Also, our seniors don't usually take full schedules. By the time they get to seniors. Because of the seventh period classes we offer, they don't need to carry a full schedule. And that affects your senior class too. And the other thing is, we really need to hit our enrollment this year at the high school level. I don't think we're going to see as much growth in the elementary as we did. We're only up by, I think, a point six FTE this year. From what we're projecting, which is wonderful.
I have a really quick question, just, um, I I I may be wrong about this, but because we have a seventh period day, are we in some sense being like penalized by the way the state funds us? Because, because kids who take six classes, excuse me, six classes, which would be like a full schedule somewhere else. If they take six classes here, then they're not taking a full schedule.
If you take six classes and it's a full schedule, we just don't get paid for that seventh class. We only get paid up to a certain amount of time.
Okay.
And that's it. We only can claim one FTE on a student. So if it's more hours per week.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to the state.
But we're setting those more hours.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. We're paying our staff for those hours and that comes out of levy dollars.
Right, yes.
That we get funded by FTE, not headcount.
Right, right. Like, I like, because I understood the, like, the basic issue, but I hadn't thought about the fact of, like, the seventh period day factor. Okay, thank you so much.
It's a wonderful thing for our students. I mean, that's why we offer it. But with the changes in levy too, it's really affecting us too, because when your enrollment drops, your levy decreases plus your apportionment. So you're getting hit in two areas now instead of just one. And that's where it's coming.
Thank you.
And I think one of the questions has come up, you know, in terms of as enrollment changes or whatnot, you know, with the you're hearing other districts, you know, one of the notations that I saw from the neighboring school district was they're not getting rid of their seventh period day, they're committed to that. And, you know, I have received a few questions from community members about that. Our, our seventh period day is set, you know, we've committed to that. We've talked to the community in our levies or whatnot, that that really is valuable to our students. And it's what really positioned us well when the district went from twenty-one credits to twenty-four. Because it does give wiggle room in the schedules for our students to have that seventh period.
So this just is an overview of what the RIF process is. Before I continue, are there any questions about RIF versus RIF authority? From the board? So the RIF process, first is a pre-RIF process, and that's identifying the amount of the budget shortfall that exists. Exploring all the non-staff reductions and possible cost savings first. You look at your MSOC dollars, you look at can we save money even on life? So you basically look at under every stone to see what can you, where can you recoup some money? Because the last thing we want to do is reduce the educational offering for the students. And then you create your seniority list and you look at your enrollment. Seniority lists matter, because as I'll discuss later. You rip by inverse seniority. So your leasing your staff members are the ones who lose their positions first. And then you look at your enrollment, because really the way you have budget shortfall, again, in the district is because of enrollment and staffing not being aligned. And then we work on creating a reduced education plan, and that's the process we're going through now, which is driven up by again, really what the students have enrolled at at the high school. We've identified the high school where we have misalignment between the staffing and student attendance. And now we're looking at what have students enrolled in? To identify where we could make trims there. And then we seek RIF resolution approval. Again, that's where we seek authority from you. We don't necessarily have to execute. Should we execute and deliver RIF notices? That's when we start working on assignments. So it is possible that you have you rip someone at the high school who has an endorsement in another area, so why is that doing some shifting in sort of where teachers may land? That is a possibility. And then again, by May fifteenth is that sort of the deadline to deliver RIF notices.
Can you talk a little bit more about endorsement and the process for emergency endorsement and how that plays out in the bumping process?
Sure. There is another section that I'll get to where I go over that, sort of the bumping, but I'll go ahead and address that question. So emergency endorsement or out of endorsement is when we don't, we can only, we only really seek that if we don't have an otherwise qualified applicant to take the position. So you may have senior, your seniority is based on your true endorsement area. So, and you get endorsements. So if I'm a, I may have been teaching high school math. Because I have an endorsement area in nine twelve math for the past twenty years. I would then, I have twenty years of seniority in math, but if I also have endorsements in French and let's say history, I also have twenty years in those areas, even though I never have taught them. So you get ador, you get seniority in every area that you teach. What you don't get seniority in is in your emergency, your your out of endorsement area. Because you actually don't have that endorsement.
And is that pursuant to state law or the CBA?
It's actually, it's both, it's state, well, it, I believe it's just the CBA, but the state law has some influence as to how your endorsements apply, but the CBA dictates sort of how seniority works. And it has to be an endorsement area they actually hold.
Right. But I mean, it's an endorsement area you pulled, but it could be something that you taught in some ways in a past lifetime twenty years ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or never taught.
There's people who never taught, but it's, they still are getting credit for that endorsement.
Okay.
But there, and there's something different between an emergency endorsement and a conditional endorsement.
So this would still be just a regular endorsement, even though out of practice for a long time?
Correct. I don't know, I think I've answered.
Yeah.
Your question, okay. Any other question?
If you're addressing it later, it's fine to say, I'll get to it. Can you talk a little bit about how the difference in in staffing structure for elementary school versus high school? And because I'm aware that, are we getting to that?
No, I mean, this is just a general overview.
Kind of a general overview, because I know that there's teachers that teach multiple courses. And so.
I think it's, it's probably, I think that it's a great question. Where it really fits in is the comment that Booby made earlier, which is, we made a lot of adjustments at the elementaries already, and even the middle school to a certain extent. We haven't adjusted as much at the high school, and that's because of enrollment. In some ways, it's easier to make your reductions at the elementary, because a full-time teacher is a full-time teacher and they're teaching that group of kids all day long. Versus the high school teacher who's teaching five different course or teaching five periods. Three might be, you know, could be biology, and then there might be a material science, and then there might be a environmental science course. Well, if students aren't necessarily enrolling, or we have a drop in enrollment in that environmental science courses, if that's desirable. Now, we may not run that course. So now we have to figure out what to do with that point two, which goes into oh, well, that person also has an endorsement in French or something. Is that where it can go? So the complexity of the high school schedule makes reductions much more challenging than they are in the elementary, because a one point O is a one point O at the elementary versus a one point O at the high school is really five discrete classes that they're teaching. And the middle school, frankly, to the same extent. It's just that some of the credentialing for our middle school teachers. Some of them have a K eight endorsement based on where it is versus having something specific to a content period. Does that?
Yeah. And, and then just to continue, is it, when you say three to three point two, is that, is that a whole person? Or can it be parts of people?
Can be parts of people. So to sort of summarize what Superintendent wrote, then at the elementary. Elementary teachers, their endorsement is more vulnerable, because you were teaching K five. So while you may be moving between, between primary and so like K three and then four, five, so you might be moving between those. You don't need a different endorsement area. At the high school, you haven't, you might be teaching, as Dr. Rundle said, five classes. Or six, and you are doing little pieces. So you might just be taking one section from one person, one section for another. Problem with that and the impact on staff is very challenging to sort of make a living and survive on less than one point O FTE. So that creates the challenge of while you can cut pieces from individual people. That can be a very challenging solution to retaining staff members.
So just, just to kind of summarize, so what you're saying is it, it doesn't necessarily just impact three people. It could impact fifteen people. And then they have to make a decision about what they're going, even though it's three point O FTE.
Right. And as I, I will go into this later, it can also, it can impact fifteen people, but maybe because of their endorsement area, they can then teach at the middle school. So actually, the person impacted is a leave senior in that endorsement area. Which could be at a different school or in a different department. Because again, going back to Director Blow's prior question. Like you may have never taught French, but you had that endorsement. So now all of a sudden you're being asked to teach French. Because what I, what we have to do is move you to endorsement area. That also goes to employee satisfaction or dissatisfaction. Which again, like this is hard, even if people don't lose work.
But my understanding is if we were to change under the CBA, how endorsement works for seniority. Since that's within our control, right? I mean, is, is it district? It would simplify the bumping process, as well as might get better positioned teachers who have more recent history. Having taught that subject.
Yeah, I, I have to be very clear, like, we could not unilaterally change that within the CBA, would be part of negotiation.
Well, yeah, I mean, I understand. I mean, we're party to a contract. Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, so we couldn't just change it. And it would be, that would be, make us a extreme outlier. I don't know any district who doesn't have it based on seniority.
So most districts don't care how recently you taught. The subject area.
No, the one thing that our, our CBA does differently than some others is staff members can actually choose to not have their endorsement area counted in their seniority. So if a staff member truly never and back in our example, we have the math teacher who also has a French endorsement, they choose to take the French off the table. Because they never ever want to teach that, but they have to give us notice within a specific notice period of that. That is not common. Most people have more than one endorsement because they want to safeguard against that. To be honest, the people who are reduced aren't the twenty-year example that I gave you. Typically, it's your least senior, because again, at that inverse RIF.
And, and, and someone can also say, I'm willing to take the point eight and hope that new enrollment comes in. I don't want to go teach in that area. That's not where I feel like I'm going to make the best, you know, impact. And, and we've had plenty of instances like that. I think some of this is trying to paint the picture of, you know, there are infinite number of possibilities once we start going, but even three people, to your points, it's fifteen, you know, courses. And it could be many different people, so.
We can move past. So this sort of just, again, we have to do pre-RIF reduction considerations. So first we look at non-employee costs. And then in our system, we have what are called limited or non-continuing contracts and letters of assignment. As well as resignations. As indicated earlier, we don't have a lot of resignations. The limited and non-continuing are the people who are offsetting those who are on leave. So they're backfilling those on leave. So if we have people on leave, we could always choose, we could always not fill that person on leave. So that's another way we can avoid an adverse employment action.
So I have a question. When I joined the board a couple of years ago, one of the things that was in our letter actually for enrollment stabilization was the prospect of greater attrition rates. Cause some of the pension benefits with En gross House Bill twenty-two forty-two and twenty-seventeen. It was also the McCleary fix. For now, seven years out from that. Yet it doesn't seem like that the pension benefits are such that it's reduced, you know, that we're having greater natural attrition. Can you comment on sort of when, if ever, we will see greater natural attrition as a result of, I guess, the pension benefits that were cited previously for why reductions perhaps didn't need to be made? Because there would just be higher natural attrition in the future?
Um, it's challenging for me to speak to that, because I have my experience of that. I have spoken to other HR professional, sorry. And the, I think that it's difficult. It's made more complex by COVID, to be honest, because we had a disproportionately high attrition rate immediately following COVID. So we had people leave perhaps earlier than they would have naturally left otherwise. And so we had sort of a bubble of attrition. So we're going to make some time to see if that's truly going to impact. But as we'll say, by and large, if you see economic uncertainty or increases in in inflation and what have you, I think that, that tends to cause people to in inflation and what have you, I think that, that tends to cause people to stay in their area of employment longer. Um, and I'm not sure that the incentives um that were built into that, that uh had the household twenty-two forty-two, I think it was, um, are going to be offset when you have sort of some economic uncertainty that's going on on the larger scale. Yeah, that's all anecdotal. I've done no research.
Maybe it'd be safe to say that there was uh during a short time, greater attrition to COVID, but now there's the opposite of a labor shortage.
I would say it depends on what position you're looking in, in terms of a labor, labor shortage. I wouldn't want to say that because there's some specific um areas where it's harder to attract people. And um as I've spoken to you before, we've had, we are, we've done well to be fully staffed at the start of the year. Um, but I think that um there just ha-, we don't lose as many people. We don't have as much churn, which is a credit frankly to our administrators, our employees. Like we have a very collegial, um, we're, we're a nice place to work. I enjoy working with the people I work with. I, I, I think from the cust-, you know, custodians, buskers. I know so many people through our system. I have great kids and a great community. So I think we experience potentially less turnover um than other places as well. And that's not to say other places are bad, but people are making a choice to come here um over bridges a lot of the time. So I think there's a draw here and that we, we have, I mean, if you look at our retirements, I mean, we have people retiring after thirty and I think forty years. If you think of Vicki White-Altam just a while ago. And we have a, our librarian at West Mercer's been here. I don't, we're just, their tenures are so long and it's because this is as much of their community as the people live here. Um, so I think it's retirement also means leaving the community for the people who are employed here. So, but I think it's fair to say that there was this anomaly um and maybe incentives aren't, aren't enough to cause more attrition in a place where I think people are largely finding success and um comments. And that's largely anecdotal. I've not done research. Um, so pre-reproductions, instead we have limited non-continuing contracts because they don't have a guarantee of moving forward. So those are the first people who we wouldn't bring back. So that means if someone's on leave, we wouldn't choose to hire someone. We would instead keep someone who has a right to a continuing contract. So we would make the reductions there. So that's why um we always ask people, let us know if you're going to be out because it could actually help people um keep their jobs. Um, and then we look at provisional contracts. So that's our leave senior um teacher. So that's in the first three years of work, they have fewer rights. They are still entitled to continuing contracts, but they have less rights under statute. So that's governed by statute, not just the CBA. Because often it's a combination thereof. And then um potentially reduce educational programs, which right now that would be, for instance, the conversation, um, period A, but right now that is not something that's on the table at the high school. Irrespective, we don't have a choice but to follow process. We have to use this, the seniority list are going to inform what the reductions are. We have to follow state law in terms of getting the RIF authority. We have to deliver the notices on time. We do create a work recall pool. So if someone is RIF, they receive the notice and then enrollment is higher for whatever reason than anticipated, they're the first people we call back. We don't then post their job. We pull people out of the recall pool. Now, it's entirely possible that they then gone about a different job. We lose really good employees quickly. So again, this is why we don't do this lightly, uh because the dis-equal Liam and our system is huge and we just risk losing members of our community. Moving forward. And then finally, I've, I've ended up talking about this uh quite a bit at this point because just questions, which are good questions, um, that we can only actually RIF, I just want to highlight, those who are on continuing contracts. If you don't have a right to ongoing employment, you cannot be RIF. You're just not called back for the next year. So those are the people on the limited contracts, the backfill for people on leave. Um, and again, if a RIF occurs, it generally follows inverse seniority order. Um, but it can be within a department. So for example, we may be RIFing at the high school, but we need all our special, those with special education endorsements, but we don't need the math endorsements. So it could be the leasing your math person has been here for twelve years. Or the leasing your spec-, leasing your special services person, a special education teacher's been here for one. It's still the twelve-year person will be reduced because that's where we're at, that's the, the area. Does that make sense? Um, where we're doing uh, doing the reductions. And again, seniority just going over to bumping. Um, that allows a more senior employee facing a layoff to claim a position held by less senior employee. And that can be anywhere within, within the system because seniority is district-wide. So we have some people at the high school hub and at the elementary too, who can do K twelve, right? They have endorsement areas that could put them somewhere in, anywhere in our system. Um, so that's where we do get that bumping and uh or between different departments. And this is just the critical dates for the possible RIF. Um, some of those dates, a lot of these are in our contract or they're required by statute. Um, they have to do with our seniority list because that's going to govern how bumping occurs. Um, we like to have at least our two readings of a RIF resolution to get employees to have an opportunity to uh make comments and community members and for you to maybe be able to ask question of what we present. From the district, so our first reading, we're anticipating March point eight, which is your next break in the meeting. And then with a second reading on April eighteenth, that is where we are anticipating a possible uh RIF resolution approval. Um, because again, we're backing up to May fifteenth when that delivery of notice has to happen. But it's not, we can't like make that decision on May fifteenth because that's when the delivery of the notice has to happen. And we want to have conversations with the staff members and, and try to support them as we go through this process. And again, there could be recalls. I mean, there's a lot of time you deliver notice and we get enrollment back, which is what we've seen um in the past. But because of that sort of hard deadline, we have to go through this process. But I can't emphasize enough that it's, it is challenging um on everyone. Those receiving the notice are the most challenged by the process, but it's, it's disruptive to the entire community and weighs heavy on everyone.
That's a professional, it, it's kind of the last slide, but um, so you're mentioning that only continue, people in continuing contracts are RIFed and it's not necessary then legally to inform those on provisional contracts. Are we looking at reducing our high school staff, like the total number by more than three? And I, I guess how many, how many of our staff, of our certificated staff is uh are on either provisional or uh not continuing con-
Yeah, so provisional, it's still a RIF because the provisional person has less rights than someone who's non-provisional, but they still are entitled to ongoing employment. So that is still a RIF. It's an adverse employment action. Um, we're anticipating because of low attrition and not having many people on leave that we cannot absorb the um, the full amount reduction with our, basically not bringing back our limited.
And I, I think until we have all of the course registrations done too, it's hard to know that exact base. Um, but we can get you the exact number of limitations that we have. Um, I can provide that in the weekly update or if not.
I, I have the same question actually, and I just think um the wording is a little bit confusing here for people, but because it sounds like the only choice in reducing staffing to try and bring the budget into line is for people who are on continuing contracts or letters of assignment that are not limited. And so it's just like that second bullet point. I just think it's a little confusing. It just might be like are subject to the RIF, this form, you know, this formal RIF process, something like that.
Understood. So what I was trying to articulate there, just for those who are at home, um, is that those who, it's only those who have a right to ongoing employment that can be RIFed.
Yeah.
Um, and are subject to the process.
The others are just non-renewed.
Yeah, correct, non-renewed.
So this is meant to be kind of just that first overview, um, so that we're, you know, getting everyone onto the same page as to where we'd be and then we'll come back, as we said, in two weeks with the official um RIF resolution. Um, you know, it's always seeking authority. Um, and again, that doesn't mean that that has to happen, but we need to make sure that um, we're doing lots of things right now. No one thing is going to solve any challenges right now. Um, it's, it's going to be a number of them and this is one. So. We'll be back in two weeks um with the final resolution. Thank you, Director Adams and Director Bowden. Appreciate it.
Just want to make sure no more questions or.
And we'll be going in more depth in two weeks, right?
Yeah, and, and the, there'll be more opportunity to ask questions and then at that time, we're anticipating actually having true numbers based, that are informed by the high school course catalog and really identifying where, where their staff would be based on student focus launch. Thank you so much.
And then just the last um update is Samantha, if you want to come on up. Um, I, we didn't necessarily do a formal introduction of Samantha Waters. Samantha um is our new director of um nutrition and, and food services. Uh, while as a reminder, while a Chartwell employee, she's definitely a part of our team. And um I'll let Director Sullivan talk to you, but I have been super impressed with um, you know, the energy that you, that you come in with and um had to hit the ground running because the school year was already up and running when you came on board. Um, but I know everything from staffing has been a big goal of yours um and really listening to our community or whatnot as well. So anything else?
Yeah, some, a real brief background. She's been with us about five months now, started in early October. Uh, she came to us as a site manager from the Bethel School District, meaning you're kind of a hub over three to four schools. So at least somewhat similar in our size. And over the last five months, it's been my absolute pleasure to work with her, watch her learn, grow and position. Her knowledge, her skill, her management of her teams is really impressive and overall her enthusiasm for all things food service. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's nice meeting all of you. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let you go home, get some rest. And those are the main pieces of it.
Um, okay, thank you so much. Um, looking at the clock and I'm looking at our agenda and I want to make sure that we are prompt with our recognitions and our public input. Um, any?
Student representative report, I think, I think in family-wise.
Uh, sure. Is that, any objections to that? All right, let's go to our student. So we're going to jump down to
One.
To be board policy twelve fifty students on governing boards and our student representatives report.
You start. Okay, yeah. Um, so we had our uh last SSA meeting last week on Wednesday. So we got to talk to our student representatives about what's been happening around their schools. Um, elementary, so at Northwood and Island Park, the fifth graders went to Cedar Springs. So that's like kind of like the Island Wood replacement. Some schools are still going to Island Wood, but they went to Cedar Springs and they learned about like different earth sciences. And then Lakewood is also preparing for the marketplace event, which is like where they do like a mini market and it's a great way for them to like learn creativity and like money-making skills. And then um Lakewood is also doing their kindness challenge and Friday shout-outs. And then also the Mercer Island PTA has announced um a bunch of first place, second place and third place winners for the PTA art reflections contest. And then also at Island Park, something really exciting is a knitting party happening during recess. And that's where students can like learn how to cast and like knit with a goal of like knitting scarves. And um students learned how to work on their loom, how to weave and make pom-poms and even, even finger knit. It's a great time for people to like build relationships. And then also at Lakewood, they've been, um, on March twenty-fifth, they're going to be having this thing called the IDEA project. And this is basically like um an event involving an assembly and then rotations through four activity stations that are meant to simulate the experience of learning with like different abilities. And then this is their second year offering this program at Lakewood. So it's exciting to see it come back.
Yeah, so at the middle school, they're having the spring musical, The Little Mermaid, on March twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Um, at the middle school, the drill team had one of their first competitions. Um, the team uh just started this year and they already had so many performances, which has been nice. The IMS robotics team won the VEX robotic championship. The team is currently ranked sixty-third in the world out of twenty-eight hundred teams. Um, IMS eighth grader Abigail Nisa won runner-up award in the New York Times Tiny Memo.
And then also in the middle school, the new hallway system continues to be enforced and it's been working really well and like the flow of traffic is way better in the hallways. And then um the SSA reported about um improved school lunches. So thank you to Miss Waters. And then there's also been a lot of new snack line additions like Izzy's and Doritos that they're really excited about. And then a lot of other exciting things.
None of that.
Yeah, it shows how the thing. Um, but a lot of also exciting things happening in the classroom. So um the high school debate team went down to the IMS debate classes to do a demonstration of like a live debate. So that's been really cool. And also the high school drama department went down to the drama class at IMS to give a little improv performance and that was cool too. And then also trimester two is ending, so a lot of middle schoolers are like starting and like studying hard for their finals. Like, go middle schoolers, a lot of stress. And then, um, yeah, and on March twenty-seventh, the fifth graders are coming to IMS um after school for Gator for a night. Kind of like the high school had like the eighth grade one. And then like band and orchestra and other programs will be showing up. Yeah, like offerings there.
And so moving on to the high school, last week, we hosted the East Shore Band, um, Band Orchestra and Choir Festival. And that included over ten schools um coming to our school and performing and receiving feedback from guest conductors and master classes. Um, we had a blood drive on February twenty-ninth and there was so much blood given that they actually had to stop the blood drive because everyone wanted to give blood. Um, some members of our Petri Club went to Africa over the mid-winter break. Um, Petri is where they have a paired student at a, like a school in Africa and they help like mentor them and stuff like that. So it was really cool that they got to go there. Um, also for travel, the radio and media broadcast teams went to New York last week and received intercollegiate broadcasting system award. And we won like, I think over like ten awards. Our journalism class went to their state competition this past weekend and came out with two superiors and an excellence award and an honorable mention. Our media classes and our marketing classes went to UW on Tuesday to listen to a professor speak about misinformation. And our materials science class is going to the Tacoma Museum of Glass. And so that's just some of the field trips that we've been doing, which has been great close to COVID. The career club brought in a Microsoft employee that spoke to students about how to use AI and how to look for possible scams. Our mock trial team is going to state March twenty-second and our drill team will also be going to state that weekend. With Kenyon and Mr. Johnson have started a Thursday lunch and learn talks where students can learn skills for interviews, resumes and more.
And then besides that, we also have our spring sports, but their first match is this week. Um, this includes our boys soccer team, lacrosse teams, baseball, softball teams and so many more. And we will also be having our spring sports assembly on March twenty-ninth where the different teams get to like showcase like different sports videos and those are like always really fun to watch. And then cheer and drill trials are also going to be the first and third week in April. So like preparation for next year is already coming up. And then um our new weight room equipment is being appreciated by all of our spring sport, sport athletes. And there's a lot of help thanks to the booster clubs for getting that um there. And then also our ASB team hosted the Snowflake Dance Celebration for the elementary schoolers. Um, and this is where like student, elementary school students could come with their parents for a dance and it happened on March second and that was great. And then also upcoming events, uh this weekend is our culture fair and it'll be on Saturday from six to eight PM. Um, and in addition, the school has been doing a great job accommodating students with different prayer and meditation spaces. And so students who need that can reach out to counselors and have the spaces during the school day. And then um yesterday, we also had a Mercer High School two thousand and seven graduate Nikki Rowe present to the whole school and give a talk. Um, and as a legally bonded autistic individual, he's also like one of the first autistic actors and was able to share how like he like views the world and the importance of inclusivity and working together. And it was a really great talk and I saw Director Larry there too. So it was really insightful. And then um No Place for Hate, which is one of our school clubs, will be sharing a presentation on March twenty-fifth and it will include a UW professor sharing an academic approach to observe different perspectives and impacts of the Israel Hamas conflict. So a lot of work.
Yeah, so that kind of our updates on the school, but we wanted to say thank you for coming last week to the high school. We had a really great time showing you guys around. Um, Eve and I also wanted to share that on Monday, we hosted a lunch for students to talk about open enrollment. Um, so we set out a form to students so they could sign up and we gave them some background information and then they came and were able to ask questions and kind of discuss. So um I will share just like a couple of key points that we heard from the students and their key pickles. Um, some of the pros that students had for. Um, some of the pros that students had for their personal pros was the more programs there are, the more it helps with belonging. Um, because each kid has their individual program that they really like. Um, students thought that the new students could bring in new perspective and talent and help elevate everybody. Um, a lot of students said that no student would really be like, they didn't feel like any student would be like against it. They would probably either not care or be excited about having new students. Um, the thing that they thought would need to happen for it to like work successfully for them um, is they thought it was important that students would have a guaranteed spot on Hill graduation unless like something happened of disciplinary offense of something of that sort. They also said that we would need to come up with new ways to integrate new students um, in a more larger scale way if you don't have new students. And also um, they thought that students didn't really know exactly what it was. And so that maybe sharing in assembly or sharing in some larger scale way to students um, like more than eleven hours for the whole community, but something to the school could be helpful for them. Um, but yeah, that's kind of what we learned during our time of distance on Monday.
So the the students didn't have any um, they couldn't think of any things that may have been negative. Because I know in the past, when student representatives been been asked, they thought, you know, perhaps that it could be, you know, socially more difficult. I was someone, for instance, I mean, speaking from personal experience, who came to the high school after my first semester freshman year and definitely, you know, felt that I made friends, but I mean, it was a different environment. And in the past, like school board member or student representatives have expressed some of the hesitations. But last week, there was none of the hesitations or were there?
Um, there was some hesitation. Um, they had some concerns about like equity, but when they learned that other schools like had it open, we were, but they seemed fine with it. But also that's why they said they want new ways to integrate students if we were to open an enrollment. Because they do see that there could be some hard like hardships when it comes to like social aspect of the high school. And so they were just thinking like, if we can think of new ways and like kind of agree that there'll be help when it comes to new students, like that could help a lot.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the talking parts.
Any question? Go ahead.
What a what a report. So much going on in our schools.
Yeah. Um, okay. Why didn't it? I'm sorry, I just closed down my window for somebody's sake. Is they're here?
Yep.
Okay, so we will move on to our recognitions.
You want to run it or quit standing? Nigel, Adam, you want to stand in or want to podium or? Why don't we bring up, we can even just come on. So mentioned just a moment ago um, by our board representatives, um, we have Abigail Nisom here tonight. Uh, and uh, you might have seen her featured in a couple of different um, social media posts that we've done. Uh, but we felt like it was important to bring her because we've been talking about student voice. We've been talking about belonging. Um, and we have an exemplar of someone who took an idea from a class using the passion and interest of her um, teacher uh, and submitted for a piece and and want to runner up recognition through the New York Times. And so I'm going to turn it over to Principal Blydus to talk a little bit more. Um, Abigail, thanks for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you. Thanks for having us. Um, it's exciting to be in this role introducing these two amazing people. And for me, I was thinking a lot about um, the the four Bs. And and I feel like the opportunity that Whitney has um, provided for her kids is really the sense of belonging that I can write about things that I that matter to me and I have the choice and opportunity to do so, which I feel like Abby so um, deeply did in her piece. And then also this idea of broadcasting. So finding real world opportunities for kids to share out um, their writing in a place where they can um, have a voice outside of our school. And so I just really appreciate the risk that that you took and the guts that you had um, in order to share your piece with the world and for you to provide it. So I want to give Whitney a moment and then Abby a moment. So I'm just so proud of you both.
Yeah, and I want to shout out Abby a little bit further because there were thirteen thousand students who submitted to this contest from all over the world. And eighth grade is the youngest you can be to submit. And so this is our first year doing it. We were so excited about it and Abby took the risk to submit along with probably a hundred classmates in the eighth grade. And to be recognized as one of the, there were ten winners. They were all high schoolers and there were thirty one runners up. And so for her name to be published in the Times, it just is such a remarkable accomplishment. And Abby's a storyteller. And I just learned from her mom that when they moved here uh, from Israel, Abby didn't speak any English when she moved to Merser Island when she was two from Israel. And so she, her mom just said to have her win a writing award is just so remarkable and um, and wonderful. And so I'm just so proud of you, Abby, for writing about um, this piece and your family and something that meant so much to you.
Abby, do you want to say anything? I know that there's a lot of people there. But do you want to talk about your piece and and or anything further?
Um, I don't know. I guess um, this piece was like really important to me and my family. Um, actually, the first time I um, showed my mom the piece, she started crying in the, we were in the school hallway. Um, so it's just a really important piece that says a lot about my life and what my life has been like the past year. So.
Please join me in congratulating Abby. Good. Let's do a picture um, with the board, um, with Abby and her teacher and her principal. So we'll have you come right up here and we'll join you.
We're going to do it right in here.
Do you want to take pictures when I'm done? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Okay. You got it? Anyone else? Um, as we um, make a couple of adjustments uh, to our setup, we're going to bring in the podium as we move towards public comment. But just a couple of other um, recognitions this month. Uh, March is Women's History Month and International Women's Day earlier this month. Um, we also have uh, the beginning of Ramadan, uh, which started um, last week and will run for the next month. Uh, we also have No Roos coming up with the um, welcoming of the spring, uh, which is uh, welcomed by everyone. But obviously, uh, in the Persian culture, um, a significant day. And then we also have um, Purim, Purim. Uh, coming up uh, for our families to uh, celebrate from the Jewish faith. And then finally, Holy Week um, for uh, the Christian faith later on this month as well with an important week. So March is a a big one, uh, things that tend to sometimes fall in our calendar of April or in March. So it's a busy month. So with that, I will turn it back over. Um, oh, sorry, one more um, recognition, um, just as um, a quick reminder is that um, Education Support Professionals Week falls in March. And so we're coming to the end of it now, the eleventh through the fifteenth. And a reminder of all of the people that helped to really make our education come to life. Um, we oftentimes celebrate in our district as a reminder that we don't necessarily have Teacher Appreciation Week in May. Um, we tend to celebrate that all together and recognition that whether you're a nurse or a bus driver, a principal, custodian, teacher, paraprofessional, we're all educators. Um, so we tend to celebrate it all together, but an important reminder that um, it really takes everyone working together. So there's the link.
You know, sorry, I lost everything. So now I have to open things. Michelle, is this including those who signed up here? Okay, yeah, okay. We are on to agenda item three B, skipping the rest of two until after the six o'clock hour. Public input. The meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It is not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. When addressing the board at the meeting, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern and if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed. Um, our first up, yeah, oh, actually, before we start, because I don't want to forget, I just want to um, welcome to our former school board directors, Dave Meyerson and Adir Dingle, I see on our list, and just wanted to acknowledge um, your past uh, commitment to the school district and dedication and really are looking forward to hearing what you have to say because I know that you guys both have experience and that, well, maybe, but experience in the topic that uh, it doesn't, it doesn't have to always be agreeable. Um, experience in the topic that um, that you are coming to uh, speak with us about. So as we learn the most from those who have experienced it before, so appreciate your presence today. Um, you're not first on the list because we fight order of receiving them, but uh, so first up is Isabel Perez.
Good evening. I'm here today to discuss the results of a survey I conducted asking parents to share their experience with the district. I received sixty one responses. Parents have voiced concerns that are consistent with the areas identifying the exit survey for parents that left the district and that was presented to this board last December. Today, I'll talk about two areas for improvement, curriculum and individualized attention, including special education, but there are others. Here's what one parent said. The big area where I prefer the European curriculum is the topic-based learning at elementary level. My son is in second grade. His friends in Europe are studying ancient Egypt. They have written a piece about mummification and creating hieroglyph-based artwork. I really miss the science and history elements of the curriculum. It seems minimal to nonexistent in the curriculum at early elementary level here. I think this comment warrants inquiry from this board. What are the science elements of our curriculum being taught? I have also heard from parents who are former board members that STEM curriculum in neighborhoods districts starts earlier than ours. This is a gender gap issue, as a parent noted. Based on research, to get girls to be interested in the STEM career, we need to build a foundation interest by third to fourth grade. Along with curriculum concerns, too many parents stated that their children are not receiving the individualized attention they need, nor are they being challenged. One parent said, my kids aren't being challenged enough. There are no resources for teachers to support kids who are intellectually curious and want to be challenged. There needs to be more resources for teachers to support our kids. And a parent noted that leadership is losing quality teachers due to not being able to support students. Another comment was the district needs curriculum seem overly focused on both the median child, but also those who are not, who are behind, not those who may be ahead or more challenging above grade level work. On that point, another parent said, trying to be equitable, they're leaving highly capable kids behind. Here's an important to note board policy sixteen ten and the definition of educational equity described in Part S, providing the supports needed to raise the achievement of all students while increasing the performance of the lowest performing students to the level of the highest performing student. This is a very specific indication that an achievement achievement slash opportunity gap is not to be addressed by lowering the performance of the higher performing student. The board policy is to pull lower students up. Right now, all educations point to current practices to put the top, pull the top down. That is wrong and against written board policy. Pulling lower students up benefits everyone. The same also goes for our special education students with IP's. Teachers are doing what they can to support the students but encounter barriers just like the ones described above. As to the math curriculum inside in middle school and high school, a parent points out that math has been a weakness for the twelve years we have been at the district. I recall the district discussions when we moved here. Nothing has changed. The curriculum has gotten weaker. It is not surprising how many students are taking math classes at other locations. Parents took the time and effort to complete my survey. Together with the results of the access survey, we have enough data that supports an evaluation of curriculum and practices. I urge you to act on the data presented. Continue if action is not acceptable. You need to focus on what's best for our students and not distractions. Opening enrollment, for instance, is a distraction that does not address any of these current problems. Look how much time you have already spent on it and on not making our school better. I will uh, email the this uh, the surveys to your emails this uh, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Adam Raga. I'm sorry.
Raga.
Raga.
Uh, thank you guys for your time and attention. I've reviewed the proposed changes to board policy thirty one forty one and I'm supportive of the changes to offer enrollment privileges to children of coaches, student club leaders and substitute teachers. I am however, not supportive of the broad and unbounded open enrollment proposed. I saw neither an upper bound on the number of non-resident students nor a grade range to specify the limitations of open enrollment in the document. While those have been mentioned in PowerPoints, I'm of the belief that if it's not specifically called out in a voted upon document, it might as well be an unbounded program. Regarding the district's budget, have you looked into finding administrative efficiencies instead of teacher efficiencies? Have you quantified how much money can be gained by returning partial high school students from their on off-campus tutoring? Have you looked at soliciting additional donations? I've heard the quote of three point O FTE. I understand that is on the order of about half a million dollars. That's about one thirds of last year's donations to the district. Regarding the environment, adding a hundred non-resident students has the potential to create four hundred vehicle trips per day across the I ninety bridge. Returning a hundred students within the district is a much greener solution. Regarding the mental health and emotional well-being of children, this proposal is a selfish half measure. A quote from a pro-enrollment forum letter reads, flexibility. Enrollment doesn't require long-term expenditure or commitment and by its nature can be throttled to match the needs of islanders. No long-term commitment to area children. Does that reflect the values of our community? I sure do not believe so. This comment also articulates a potential conflict of interest. If non-resident students become financially burdensome, it will not be in the best interest of the district and students to continue their enrollment. You are elected by the residents of the district and your first responsibility is to the students who reside here. This becomes a complicated issue, but discarding them simply doesn't feel right and is not in alignment with what I hope are our community values. Open enrollment would allow the district to pull in students, bring their partial funding and discard those students when we no longer need their money. How can a student feel a sense of belonging if that you reapply each year? Not knowing where you will go to school next year inflicts stress on a child and on their parents. If you're going to do this, then fully own it and let the non-resident students finish out their public schooling. You cannot enact year-by-year open enrollment and say that belonging is being prioritized. It's one or the other. As a board, you'll need to take responsibility for ignoring the cause of one-third of MISD withdrawals. You'll need to take responsibility for the feedback cycle of displeased parents, inactions, departures, more open enrollment and the growing anti-levis center. I urge you to not enact broad open enrollment. If you choose to do so, own the inevitable ripple effects and added difficulty impacting the future levies and bonds. Own the continued inaction on current and past parents' concerns with the district and the distraction from them in open enrollment at all costs. And own the negative effects, namely a teacher reduction in force that will be experienced by the Mercer Island Education Association Teachers Union as a result of continued inaction on parent concerns. You have a bucket with holes in it, you can fix some of the holes by addressing concerns or you can fill it with a two-thirds full cup through unbounded open enrollment. Only one of these actions will directly strengthen the district and contribute positively to its long-term financial success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Dana Levy.
Before you start the clock, account the line of clauses, please. Okay. Hello. Thanks for making some space for my last chat as one of MISD's regular and special needs bus drivers. For those of you who don't know me, welcome. I'm Dana, rhymes with Anna. I've been driving second generation kiddos now for a while, twenty nine years in the transportation department and many as a proud MIEA union rep. And a year and a half before that, as an administrative assistant to the food services director in the early nineties. I wear my heart on my sleeve and for better and not, I'm always yet to catch myself before expressing quite what's on my mind. Life in island people have shifted and evolved in my nearly thirty-four years on Mercer Island. The superintendent back then was Dick Iber. Much like you, Fred, Dick had a strong awareness of the community's pulse. We weren't without challenges. High school students smoked their parents' cigarettes on the corner of Ninety-second and Forty-second, and they smoked their weed on Forty-first and Ninety-second. There was no internet, but rumors and innuendo flew with near equal ferocity. I have stories that could bring tears to even the tuckest of exteriors, some so poignant they could swell a heart to overflow, and some that would make your jaws and belly ache from laughing. I'm retiring a few years earlier and on an altered course than planned, but that's okay. That's with being a school bus driver, and mom to my awesome son Joey and amazing daughter have taught me. Flexibility at a moment's notice, kindness at every turn, awareness of the unforeseen. Before I go, I'd like to share a couple of requests and thoughts. You can fill in the blanks or ask me down the road. As in the past, and propriety aside, our district bus drivers would welcome you, board members, and Fred. Ride with us, get a feel for Mercer Island students' early mornings and their post-school days. We are the people who see a valuable perspective that first and last-period teachers often miss. We are a vastly underused resource. Two, take care of us, all of us. Classified and certified people, all of us. I will never stop, step down from my ardent, fastidious, hammering demand that when any staff member becomes injured physically or emotionally, sick leave should not be activated. Workers' comp pays two-thirds of a paycheck. That doesn't cover the basic ongoing gills or the additional ones that ensue, but at a minimum, staff should have the option to use sick leave for the balance of their third. Sorry. And not be penalized for the necessary loss of time. MISD has always prided itself on being innovative, forward-thinking, a district that values its students and its staff. Currently, when an employee is injured on the job, sick leave is invoked. When sick leave runs out, we can ask or beg for donations from other staff. After that, contracts just closed out. Two things happen. The district loses a valuable staff member, and the staff member's life goes from having to deal with the trauma of physical and/or emotional injury into survival mode. Three, last, support us, encourage us, include us, incentivize, incentivize us, classified and certified staff. In other districts, longevity, lack of sick leave use, and new employee hires receive incentive pay. We are in very short supply. Value us. In closing, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be part of this wonderful school district for thirty-one-plus years. It hasn't always been an easy road to travel. The construction hazards, delays, nine-eleven, basic snowstorms, blizzards, not to mention COVID metaphorically and literally, have tripped up the best of us. I've suffered a student beatdown, hits, bites, falls, false accusations, and a threatening coworker. But I've also been blessed to be part of the lives of students who just needed some encouragement to start their day and a kind word before stepping off the bus. I've become a near-family member of many students, treasuring the years as I've watched these children grow. Some into the adults they are now, like you, Dan, drove you way back when. And as I've driven their children to and from school, there have been many, many hundreds of kids and thousands of miles, each one providing a lesson and a skill. I've made wonderful friendships, some that will be lifelong. Sorry. I've left, I've learned humility, the capacity to laugh at myself, and to quiet my voice, sometimes so much so now that I can either sing a chorus line or complete a sentence without taking a breath. My cup, my gratitude cup, runneth over. Through it all, because of it all, I stand here now and say, "Aha, thank you."
Thank you.
Next, we have, is it, is it Linnea Augustine speaking on behalf of?
Lauren Katz.
Linnea?
Yes.
Linnea. Oh, sorry. Linnea.
I'm speaking on behalf of Lauren Katz. Good evening, board and community members. Thank you for serving our community. I have three kids in elementary school, and I'm concerned about the digital reading and math curriculum. I have consulted experts in New York who have confirmed that digital programs are harmful. A family member, friend, who is also a teacher, moving here from New York, has decided to send their kids to a private school due to MISD's tech reliance. My children experience iStream from screen time, find writing on iPads difficult, make careless errors in diagnostics, leading to unchallenging levels, and struggle with iReady, math on iPads. Despite all this, they do well with traditional paper-based learning at Mathnesium three hours a week to make up for what they are not learning in the classroom. Mathnesium is full of MISD elementary school-age students. My kids also mentioned that they are playing addictive games on iPads that reward them with in-app purchases, which I find inappropriate. Moreover, the benchmark curriculum is scripted, unengaging, and does not appropriately challenge my avid reader daughter, putting her on basic graphic novels with few words. How can she build on her literacy skills? The benchmark reading curriculum is filling our children and turning them off to literacy. I urge the board, also school leadership and the Director of Learning Services, to bring back the traditional curriculums, focusing on children's learning instead of making teachers' jobs easier at the cost of their learning. I'm tired of spending thousands of dollars on Mathnesium and a private tutor for literacy to make up for what they should be learning in class. Students can master math and literacy skills from digital curriculums. Additionally, there is a concerning tolerance of antisemitic language in middle school, both in hallways, in iPhones, and iPads, on and off school premises, which has exploded after October seventh. While the principals are proactive with Holocaust education in partnership with ADL to address this, many Jewish students are hesitant to report incidents due to fear of social stigma in the school and outline. More support is needed to address antisemitism, especially in hallways between classes. I ask the board to focus on these concerns for the sake of our children's academic success and social belongings. Thank you, Lauren Katz.
Next up, we have Dave Meyerson.
Let me introduce myself. I'm Dave Meyerson. I was on the school board from two thousand nine to two thousand seventeen. Know something about the issue of open enrollment. Forwarding to my conclusion, if open enrollment is accepted, the district will suffer a significant revenue loss of almost one million dollars a year. This comes about because the state funding that comes with each student is not sufficient to reimburse the school district for the course of instruction. The state provides about sixty-eight percent of our budget. Local contributions, including charitable contributions, provide about thirty percent of our budget. And local funding is not possible for the additional students. The main source of local funds is through our property taxes, funding both the education programs and operations levy and the capital technology levy. In theory, more money could be raised from taxing ourselves for the out-of-district students. However, both the EPN levy and the CapTech levy have a hard limit on what can be collected, and we have reached that limit. Therefore, there is no more money to be had from furthering, from further taxing ourselves. The amount of the shortfall may be roughly approximated by assuming the recently acquired and plan to be acquired students are a hundred and seventy in number. Now, that's, I'm just throwing that in the ether. With a fifty-one-hundred-dollar-per-student deficit for the combined levies, now it's pretty accurate, there is a yearly deficit of about nine hundred thousand dollars. For example, we could collect two-point-three-million dollars for all the extra students, but they would cost us three-point-two-million dollars to teach. And this is obviously, in my mind, a losing proposition, no matter how you slice it. Our present financial situation is not dandy. We have already borrowed four million dollars from the CapTech levy to supply the, supply the reserve fund. Five years ago, we had about six million dollars in the reserve fund as mandated by the school board rules. We have evidently been running a deficit that is a matter of two, ten million dollars over five years, and that's very concerning. Now, we are proposing to add almost one hundred million dollars a year to the deficit. One hundred million, one million dollars a year to the deficit. Well, if all-island students would be, if all-island students would be revenue-neutral, if only they could be accommodated without increasing expenses beyond what the state will provide. That has not proven possible. This is not to impugn the desirability of out-of-district students. In two thousand seven to nine, we invited out-of-district students for two years. Ninety-two were enrolled. They stayed until graduated. They contributed as a culture of Mercer Island and were in no way a burden. So I'm going to take that off the table entirely. In two thousand nine, the program had to be terminated because it was financially unsustainable. This we discussed when I was on the school board, and there was no support for opening it up again. It was unanimous. So, I have seen this movie before, and I know the ending. The overriding concern right now is to get our finances in order, and taking on off-island students will impede that effort.
Next, we have Darren Bol.
Thank you very much for having me. I want to talk about the off-island people coming to the schools. I have a concern about some of the periods that they're coming from, some of the schools. And I'm going to be tail-tailing on our students' discussions and our anti-Semitism. The schools nearby have had some troubling student lockouts, Judea-phobic student lockouts, and I'm concerned that that may come here if we start having a movement. There's already concern, they've heard much a lot about Judea-phobia. And the anecdotes I've heard, the schools have been trying, but haven't really been able to get a handle on it yet. But I just wanted to share my one experience with it. About three years ago, when in Atlanta, there was a shooting at a beauty salon, and the school board, sorry, sorry, the schools, the PTA, and the city council all put out statements to crime and anti-African hate. A few months later, there was attacks against Jews in United States in the street, sushi restaurants. And I went to those three same events to see if they made more than two statements. Sorry, sorry, students against the anti-Jewish violence. Both the PTA and our city council were willing to make statements. However, our schools, unlike what they did for the Asian community, would not make a statement on behalf of the Jewish community. And I'm personally a little concerned that the, the level of support will just not be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joy Matara.
Okay. Good evening. Others have spoken about the problems with open enrollment, how it's failed in the past and commits us to a deficit of, let me say, five thousand dollars per child per year, as that burden could go on for many years. I've heard that the MISD is proposing to make off-island kids reapply every year. Once we no longer need their money, the MISD can then deny their applications. It's like, thanks for the cash kid, we never wanted you here, now get lost. And does this seem wrong to anyone? Because these are, these are people. These are children, and they're being viewed as a commodity, basically, ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching. And it's one thing to offer open enrollment to the members of our community who work for the city but don't live here. Having a child in school here eases stress on the parent. It helps the city attract good workers, and it strengthens our community. It's a win for everyone to do it that way. However, we should not look to exploit children of other communities just to give us an inadequate boost in money, especially when I believe that lack of money is not the real problem. It's a symptom of a much bigger problem. Parents who live here are choosing to take their kids out of the MISD because they feel that a good education is important, and the MISD is not providing one. Less than ten years ago, demand was so great that we raised taxes to build North Ridge Elementary. Last year, enrollment was so down that we considered closing Island Park Elementary. We still have more than enough kids living here to fill the schools, and yet, an increasing number are not going to the MISD. And what is the problem? I've heard that our schools were great, but they changed. They might still be better than other public schools. However, parents who moved here because of our reputation have told me that they've been disappointed with what they've found. They want their kids to learn how to read, write, do arithmetic, and continue to build a strong foundation so they can succeed for the rest of their lives. Several parents have then made the difficult choice of paying to send their kids to private. Some can't afford that, so they're home schooled, or they move away. Some parents still have their kids in school district because private schools are full. St. Monica's expanded, the last that I heard, they still have a waiting list. This means that our funding shortfall can still grow, and most likely will grow if the problems causing parents to flee remain unfixed. Eventually, the MISD reputation will suffer. Open enrollment is not the solution. Please don't be lazy. Fix the problems with the curriculum so that everyone will want to bring their kids here.
Adair Dingle.
Hello. I want to actually start with thanking you, Deborah, your remarks are very nice. And I know that since I was on the school board from two thousand five to two thousand and seventeen, twelve years, I know how much time it takes to not only sit through meetings, but also prepare for them. I'm also here, though, to address concerns about the prospect of open enrollment. I was actually on the board when it opened up enrollment the last time, more than fifteen years ago. It was focused on the elementary school level, and the intent was to even out the class sizes. We closed open enrollment after two years because it was not financially sustainable. The children did have the option of staying in the district full-time until graduation. As noted, our students are not fully funded. And in particular, at the high school, which is already really a capacity despite the remodel, only six periods are funded. We provided seventh period. That is a valuable program, but you don't want to get rid of. But that means that every student that we add, right, they're most paying six, sevens, seven. We also have CREST, which is a very important program, right? It addresses a lot of needs that can't be met at high school and should be sustained. It has to note that if you don't get an FTE, right, you don't get the full sixty-eight percentage of the funding for the students. That's a problem at the high school, because the, if they take five periods because they're going to private for one or two periods, you don't get the full amount of money. A student could take one period at the Mercer High School, and you would still get partial funding, and that student still have a counselor at the high school. And that student still have counselor at the high school. So one of the things that hasn't been noted previously is that every student at the high school, and in fact, even the students who go completely off uh and go to run and start, they still have a high school counselor. That's a tremendous load on the high school counselor. So increasing enrollment, right, when you don't have a guarantee of uh full time equivalency is, is problematic. Increasing enrollment when you have a guarantee of full time enrollment at seven periods is problematic. Uh, so I just don't see that as a, a winning venture. Um, I'd also address uh some of the comments made earlier in terms of this being a distraction. Um, our schools are very valuable, let's look at the internal problems with them. Uh, is it true that close to ten percent of the high school students go to private for math or elsewhere? I believe it's a really high percentage, right? There's also students who go off to run and start. I mean, I, my kids are all grown now, obviously, but I, I know from experience experience with their friends, a lot of kids start running start, not because they want to, they don't want to leave their friends. They especially don't want to leave a lot of the athletics and band programs that are, you know, wonderful extracurricular activities, but they leave because they that is the only way they can get a head start on college, right? If you compare Mercer Island High School and the offerings to some of the schools that are now nationally ranked and higher ranked than Mercer Island, the International School. Um, the uh Rainier High School, uh the, the flight school, um, they offer much more challenging offerings than we do, okay? And that could be corrected. Um, and I also want to comment the, just to wrap up, the antisemitism is a big problem, it always should be addressed. Thank you.
Next up, we have Douglas Schaefer.
It's Dwight.
I'm sorry?
Dwight.
Dwight Schaefer, we will make that correction.
The two thousand and three annual report shows that Mercer Island School District School Board wiped out six million dollars in reserves in less than three years. During the period when the low end class instruction and when a substantial portion of employees were not needed. Bankruptcy was miraculously avoided and a two million dollar loan from Capital Projects Fund, which is funded by voter approved levy to the general fund was repaid. When the annual report didn't say that three point seven five million was transferred from the Capital Projects Fund to the general fund. I find this action unethical, maybe illegal, and at least will make many Mercer Islanders think twice before voting to approve a school levy. What will happen next year? Will the board costs get under control? Costs are dominated by salaries, it can only be adequately reduced by layoffs or salary cuts. Quite possibly, the capital fund will be raided again. The board is considering open enrollment whereby students from other districts are allowed to attend Mercer Island schools. MISD would then take the state funds allocated to these students. The budget shortfall would be transferred to Mercer Island to just excluding students to Mercer Island. Now this works only if MISD costs to educate these students who may have special needs. This lessens the state allocation and if other districts don't retaliate by raiding Mercer Island students. I believe MISD budget shortfalls have two primary causes. One, enrollments are shrinking. MISD data show only three hundred and seventy-six of eleven hundred and seventy-one students who withdrew from MISD in their previous four school years moved out of King County. This is a strong indication that the students and their parents believe these students can get a better education elsewhere. Two, when the fix and McClury decision was enacted, school districts were allowed to get both former local funding and the state allocation for one year. MISD voted to use this windfall to increase salaries instead of one year bonuses or increased reserves, even though there were no future committed funds to sustain those salaries. MISD could have chosen staff reductions or furtors from the COVID shutdowns and many of the affected employees would actually receive a raise due to the general federal payments and the fiscal crisis could have been averted. Now, the immediate action is required is to reduce staff and or the salaries and to reduce program offerings focusing on core requirements. Then, on a census inspection as to the cause of student departures from MISD need to be performed. Followed by corrective actions, which I believe must include actions to improve academic scores and MISD's reputation for academic excellence. Open enrollment will have uncertain or negative consequences and should not be pursued.
Thank you. Apologize in advance, uh, next up we have Kihua Zhang.
Yes.
Did I say that right?
Very good. Thank you, thank me, I will make it quick, everyone go back home. I, I, I think similar men uh inputs about open enrollment, I also want to bring the board's attention. Being a parent group I was in, there were heated discussion around this topic. I think mostly what confused, what I read was mostly confusing about where we are now, whether this is made, some people said this is already being made, some people say now, some people say because financial, some people know. What I read is just lots of different information, confusions. So what I urged the board uh to make a clear communication to the community about the decision-making process, where we are, why we make this, why we are another, what pros and cons, so that um, I guess build a trust because we're trying to keep the parents in the uh school district, if that's without trust, I guess it's difficult, so.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. All right, um, so you know, I meant to say this in the beginning, um, but uh, you know, due to unforeseen circumstances, the webinar that um Dr. Rendell is leading with, with other staff members had to be postponed from this past Tuesday to I'm sorry, Monday to
Next Tuesday.
This Tuesday at
Next Tuesday, sorry.
Six thirty.
It's upcoming.
March nineteen.
March nineteenth at six thirty. Um, it will be online, I know our communications will send out links, um, reminding everyone. It also will be recorded and then posted on the website the next day. So at that time, does it work for you, you will be able to see it, it addresses all these issues. Um, what I can, it's also on the agenda um for some discussion today, it's also on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, the webinar will hopefully answer a lot of the questions and concerns. Um, we've been having these discussions, but, but the board is included and still having a lot of questions. Nothing has been decided, no, whether or not we're doing it and any parameters. Nothing has been decided, I guarantee you, we wouldn't waste our time to talk about something that we've already decided on. Um, so we're not going to do that and, and we haven't. Um, so please continue to bring feedback um and let people know. And I just urge you, if you have questions or concerns about information you're getting, please reach out to the sources that have the information rather than going to sites that it's not off, it's sometimes, it's more opinion than fact. We can all draw different opinions and conclusions from the same set of data, but we want to make sure that the information that's being provided is accurate. So, um, so, so thank you so much, everyone, for, for participating today, we're seeing faces and hearing how people we don't normally hear from. Um, and we value your contributions to our community. Um, we talk about community a lot and, and we want you to know that, that you are who we are speaking to. And our students, community, our parents, our staff and our former of all of those, as well as anyone who lives here. Um, you're all really uh relevant and opinions are noted and we know that decisions we make have an impact on you as well. So thank you for sharing your thoughts and concerns with us. I'm sure you will hear discussion of that if you were able to stay for the rest of the meeting. Um, otherwise, uh, like I said, there's, there could be more opportunities for learning. Um, seeing as the time, um, I want to give our, our board an opportunity as I, hopefully people will stay as well, continue on with our agenda. If you're not able to, I want to give a board five, ten minutes. Yeah, unless, what?
Five minutes.
Five, the dual five minute, we're gonna recess for five minutes until six fifty.
So we have um, uh, Brandon's here this evening uh to kind of give us an update of where we are in the process with respect to um, the next phase, which is architecture selection. Um, and so we're gonna provide you this update, just a reminder though, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we have that entire hour before the next meeting as well, which is where we're gonna get a lot further into it. Tonight, we're really looking for um continued support to press forward with the next um phase with the architects, so Brandon.
Great, thanks, Dr. Rendell. Um, as, as Dr. Rendell said, our um request to you tonight is to uh provide approval to proceed with the contract development with the two architectural firms who have been selected for um the concept design work. Uh, that's Malum Architects for the high school project and the Thune Architects for the middle school project. Um, but before we get into the details of that, um, I just, I wanted to give you a little bit of background. Um, so dialing way back in two thousand and fourteen, uh, the community passed a bond that included replacing half of the middle school, some improvements at the high school and Northwood Elementary. And at that time, the expectation was that the next bond that would follow would finish the middle school project. Um, it wasn't until two thousand and nineteen um that that long range facilities process uh updating began. It was completely derailed by the pandemic and we picked up the work again in two thousand and twenty-three. In twenty-three, we uh formed a facilities committee of about thirty parents, community members, students and board members. Um, through a series of meetings, uh, the group studied the need at all the sites. Um, the options and the order of magnitude comes. For the elementary work, that was priced as replacement. For the middle school is placed as, priced as replacement and for the high school as renovation. Um, I think it's really important to remember that those were very high level cost per square foot kind of estimates, just to give people a sense of the order of magnitude of, of the size we were talking about. Um, I'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, after many hours of work, the facilities planning committee and the board presented options to the community. Uh, we heard a lot of things through the community input, um, and at least for me, the main paper ways were, one, the facilities need updating. Um, two, please don't consider an elementary school. Um, or don't do anything with an elementary school. But we also heard loud and clear that people thought we should get started with something. Clear acknowledgement that, you know, many of our buildings are old and need to be updated. Facilities planning committee then again, after the community outrage, invoked unanimously to support moving forward with a project that would finish the middle school and a project that would address some, but not all of the facilities and program needs at the high school. Committee was also supportive of a multi-bond approach, where we were trying to get everything done in one, but we were doing it over a series of bonds. Over the past two months, we have issued requests for qualifications for architects. Those were advertised in Daily Journal of Commerce and Mercer Island Reporter. We received statements of qualifications from architects. Those were reviewed. Interview teams were assembled. Interviews have been conducted and we're here tonight to talk to you about approval to enter into the contract negotiations.
Question on that. I didn't see a contract on the agenda. We had for other much lesser dollar amounts, like for the demographic studies. Is there a reason that we haven't been tried? You don't approve them tonight?
What we're asking you for tonight is approval to begin to negotiate those contracts.
Well, we haven't seen the parameters of cost or what the scope of work or, you know, essentially what, what about the meat of those?
You're jumping ahead there. So on March 28th, we're going to return before the board to introduce the two firms and ask for their contract approval. In addition, we have the study session planned for the hour prior. And we want to examine several factors that are really going to influence to a great degree the work that's going to be done. As you may know, from some updates that have been provided over the last couple of months, Ed Peters, who served as the capital projects director for Edmond School District for the last 23 years, has joined me at CPM. Ed and I are entering, you know, a wealth of knowledge and experience in school design and construction. And for the study session, Ed and I plan to discuss three key drivers for the design and cost of these projects. We want to talk about procurement. In 2014, the projects that were completed were done with the design bid build approach. And most school districts in the, in the region are using what's called a general contractor construction management approach. So we want to give you kind of a deep dive on what, what that means and what we recommend. And we also particularly for the middle school, want to do a deep dive into what our neighboring districts are building. So we'll look at a series of comparative projects and their square feet per student, what the cost per square foot for construction is and what the total cost per square foot is, along with the details on each of those projects to help you understand kind of the differences in what you'll see in the costs. We have not provided to either design team a square footage recommendation or a budget. Really, that is the work of these firms is to help us determine what needs to be done. And we'll bring a cost estimator in to help with that. The other thing is, you know, the, the reason that we want to do this work is that we need some guardrails around those things, right? We want to ensure that, that the, you know, Director Blot's to your point, that the cost, that the square footage that we're allotting for students, the size that this addition ends up being at middle school is consistent with what's happening in neighboring districts. And we want to look very specifically at what other districts are doing in terms of construction, what that cost per square foot is, and use that as our model going forward. So it's not to say that it will be exact, but we want to give you a really good understanding of, of what's happening in the area. The committee's recommendation for middle school and high school, both of these firms really brought their aid teams to Mercer Island. They both have extensive experience in school design, construction, and I think we're really excited to work with them. So you want to talk a little bit about the process?
Sure. So after our committees met with the different firms last week, then on Friday, we reconvened and each of the committees then met directly with me to talk about, you know, what they had heard in interviews, the process that, you know, they went through and where everyone kind of stood. And then I even had a chance with one of the firms to bring them back for kind of a second interview to learn a little bit more. And, you know, I, I think the two firms that are on there, Malum and Methune, each bring great expertise and partnership with us. Obviously, Malum is someone who we are more familiar with. Methune would be, is, is more of a brand new group for us, not brand new to the industry. Lots of our neighboring school districts and others have history with them. But I think they're going to pick up on that middle school project if that's where we choose to go and really put together not only a great team, but a great process to help our school district to develop what those learning spaces would be. And so it's kind of this one, one group who we know well and one who we're going to form a new partnership with if it's agreed upon there. But I was really impressed with what our team brought back and where we might be to go next, given approval to move forward.
Who did the first half?
The first half of the middle school was in Tigris. And so they were part of the interview. But the team and Brandy, you can speak to it more, the team really came back and I, I really pressed on that actually. You know, we'll probably get questions there that where Methune is headed and the team they've assembled, I think will really move us forward and finish that project in a really awesome way.
Yeah, I think, you know, in the request for qualifications that we issued for the middle school and then the instructions for the interviews, we were, you know, very specific about wanting to bring students back under one roof, bring the community back under one roof there. But that the end product must feel like it was intentional all along, right? We're not going to bring in a different architect and have, you know, a plunked down addition at the end of it in some way. So I think the, I think the Methune team, we do have some familiarity with them. Joanne Wilcox, who was a partner at our principal at Malum's office and worked with us on a number of projects, had gone to Methune about three years ago. So we do have some connection there. She's on the project team. But I honestly, I think it was the other three team members who showed up at the interview that really resonated with our interview team that consisted of Mary Jo, Nova, Doug Davis, science teacher, myself, and Connie. And I think they really resonated, resonated with, with the education group.
This is maybe more of a question for the board than for you, but since you're speaking upon long-term capital projects, I will direct it to you. So when you're building a team, it's not just the individual player, but it's how it fits in as part of a piece of a puzzle. When I think of a long-term capital project plan, when I think of sustainable school bond debt load over the years, 20, 25 year horizon, I need to know how the immediate next bond in front of me fits in to the broader vision of what facilities and capital projects look like. The last that the committee was presented with the day of with, you know, like limited time, just initial reaction, showed stacked bond proposals totaling 522 million, which would be approximately a sevenfold increase in our current bond load for school construction from a little over $820 for a median household burden to 5,000 dollars, to 522 million dollars. In my view, that's just a non-starter. I mean, I don't see any other districts in the area that would have anything close to that. I recognize that right now, we're on the low end, so I think there's certainly a capacity to spend more than we have in the recent past. But to the question, you know, that I hear from people, aren't you putting the, I guess, the cart before the paws? I mean, what would be the response? And if you wanted to flex and say like, that's the board. I mean, I, I understand it's, you know, not necessarily your decision.
Yeah, I don't get what the question is.
The, the question is, how can we move forward when we haven't decided what the total long-term debt is in, in the stacked bond proposals? We haven't determined if 522 million dollars is a reasonable amount in this immediate next bond proposal, if, you know, we think that's the course that we're charging. I don't think that's a reasonable course.
I mean, you have to figure out what you want to do before you can figure out what the budget for that project is.
I had this entire conversation.
We had this, we had this discussion and directed this in order to go forward. So what's different now than what your opinions were then?
Oh, my opinions are the exact same.
Okay.
Okay.
I have, Brandy, I visited civics class this week and one of the kind of hot ultra-local issues for the students in that class was parking enforcement at the high school, which I guess there's now a person hired to be enforcing parking rules. And somebody that all the kids knew had just gotten a ticket for $300 for parking in the Crest parking lot after multiple warnings. And it made me go, oh, like, there really isn't enough parking. I mean, I had two kids go through the high school here and, you know, get, get some parked probably illegally or borderline illegally a number of times, you know? And so I just am wondering, since I wasn't part of the, of the committee, whether looking at building a parking garage is something that had ever been considered for the high school? Because it is, it is a burden on the neighborhood that surrounds the high school.
It, you know, it's interesting that you would ask that because not for Mercer Island, but for another school that I'm doing some work for. We just recently looked at the cost of the parking garage and it is $100,000 per stall to build structure.
They should run facts.
Buy a show bus, Brad.
We do. It's called school buses.
The yellow limousines.
We've, we've, you know, we've talked about that in the past, you know? Could you, could you create a structured parking for the, at the stadium lot, for example? But it is just so incredibly expensive. And, you know, there's always been this philosophical argument about whether kids should be driving or, right? That always, it always gets caught.
Well, and just to quickly address that, I'm pretty sure that there are alternate ways that are encouraged to pay those fines that should be to service and lunch duty and, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, like the ticket has a cost on it, but, but yeah. Yeah, but like the, for my kid, just the, the bus stopped running. The bus that was close to our house stopped running at the beginning of COVID. And so like the entire campus at his school, it was like a 20-minute walk to get to this stuff, you know? So, you know, in January, it was freezing and it's raining.
All right. I don't want to go down that rabbit hole too much. I think that question.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't want to go down that rabbit hole too much. I think that question.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, Director Blot, in response to what you had asked, I, I think that first of all, we heard, don't talk to elementary school, you know? Let's, let's not, let's not disturb elementary school parents this soon after COVID. And that, you know, kids are still adjusting, that having disruption, that parents struggling about where their kids will go and whether it's going to be construction on an occupied site or, you know, we're going to try and do a swing school of some sort and consolidate kids for a short period of time and then put them back.
But the only thing that was considered by me was three elementary schools, all right? I just want to like, I mean, what was the stuff, right?
Let me finish your sentence, please.
And so I think that, I think that we, in, in looking at the high school and the middle school project, we are going to make sure that we are creating a school that is an effective use of square footage and it is an economical design. And we're not, we're not using the budget number that we used at the facilities planning committee as a starting point, right? We're, we're saying, what is it really going to take to do this project? And, and I think you're going to have those numbers in the fall. And that doesn't preclude a future bond and, and how you approach, you know, the elementary schools and the balance of the program needs. So I guess in, in my mind, proceeding with this work doesn't, doesn't ensure at large debt load. You know, part, a great part of that debt load will be how you address the elementary schools, which I feel like we thoroughly heard from the community, don't talk to us about that right now.
Sure. Any desire to discuss modifying the current plan?
Yeah, I understand going forward. I don't think we have done the necessary groundwork of how it fits into an overall budget. And I mean, I think it's possible that the core is correct, but I think the board hasn't done its job of providing guidance. Unfortunately, you know, putting you in a spot where you're trying to read the tea leaves. And I think, I don't think it's as clear as it could be. And maybe the board will start clarifying what we think of, you know, sustainable long-term debt load is and how like the next project fits into future ones. That will, conversation will begin with engaging an architect, which is the reason I don't, I'm not flatly against it. But I think there's concerns. I think, you know, if I go back to where we were, I believe it was January, where we were looking for the go-ahead to proceed with this next step. And that was to be able to start looking at architects, because it's really hard to get a sense of what is the cost until we know more about the concept design. We can talk in terms of, you know, what a project might be or whatnot, but until we really go through that process, which is what we're looking for, for this evening, is to go forward. We feel like we've found two great architects who can take us through the next phase. It doesn't commit you to anything in the future. There is expense. There's no doubt about that. I won't hide that. But it's not trying to commit you as a board, trying to commit the community to anything beyond. Now is the next phase, which is what does a middle school really look like? And we'll be talking to all the community members who are part of that and then come back to you. And so it's not really, I see the, I, I see the piece that you're looking at, but I, I don't know how to come back to you with solid numbers on what these projects will cost until we know what it is that we're exactly trying to build. Otherwise, all we're doing is bringing back numbers that we think rather than more actual numbers. So that, you know, that's where this fits in and coming back to you. You know, I'd love to be able to say to you as a board, listen, Brandy and, and the architects, we're going to be able to come back in June. But by the time we try to get all of the inputs from everyone, they're going to need the summer to do the design work. And they're not designing it all the way down to all the blueprints. They're going to be coming back of, here's the concept design of what that would look like.
So I guess like for me in terms of down the road, maybe two weeks for contract approval, what I would like to see in order to not abstain but to accept it would be to see stages in the design. I mean, what, you know, like it, it's not just for, you know, from nuts to bolts. It's, hey, this is going to start narrowing what the board builds consensus on as a reasonable project and how that fits in to the broader projects that are made to be done. But if I see a huge amount of money and it's just one stage, that starts looking like less like providing information to the community and more like going down and be determined.
Oh, you respond. I mean, I, I don't disagree in terms of the phasing of it. We're on a fast timeline as it is already. It's not reckless by any means, but we are pushing this along so that we do get you to a place as a board, so you can see where that is. But I don't know if you want to comment as well in terms of what to expect on the 28th.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think on the 28th, you know, Ed and I really want to help educate you about what drives construction cost and what kind of square footage we should be thinking about for the middle school, given the current population and the projections. And for the high school, it's a very, I mean, they're two very different projects, right? For the, for the middle school, we have this addition to do and buildings to demolish and a site to finish. For the high school, we have a whole series of wants and needs that we need to, you know, pull out what all those are and then we need to prioritize what's the most important part of that that would be included in the bond and puts a cost to that. And I, I expect you'll see a list and you can go as deep into that list as you want or don't want when the time comes. So, you know, we, we won't see, that's what you'll see on the 28th. It's really that our deep dive on those things during the study session and then an opportunity for you to meet both firms and to approve a contract that we hope to have out to you by the end of next week. It's not a full architectural contract. It is only for concept design, right? So in concept design at the middle school, we'll come up with a solution that works on site with the square footage. So in concept design, um, at the middle school, we'll come up with a solution that works on site, what the square footage of that is. How we're going to deal with stormwater, how we're going to tie structurally into the other building, all those things that will drive the cost. Um, but we won't actually be designing, um, the building or, you know, figuring it out. You know, what the flooring is and what the wall treatments are. We'll make some assumptions on that for the conceptual cost estimate. At the high school, again, we'll have that list, so, um, uh, you know, uh, next week, there, there won't be anything new to see. I would expect that over the course of, um, you know, now until October, we'll do a couple of updates with the architects. To show you how that's coming together and taking shape. Um, but you know, the other thing I would add is we don't know what we're going to do with the elementary school. So it's sort of impossible to come up with a cost. I mean, it could end up being, you know, a really significant renovation with a small addition. It could be full replacement and so. You know, to, to know at this point what that total package is, you know, it's difficult and it's not going to all happen over the course of five years. It's going to happen over a much longer timeframe. In which case things also change as time goes by and, you know, any assumption we make today. Will be different in ten years. So I totally appreciate the point that you're making. Um, but I think we have, we have to start somewhere, um, and this is, this is the place I think we heard start. And we're going to be as conservative as we can and starting from the beginning.
And, and as I said, for me, I would like to just see phases in the contract so we're not binding ourselves to pursuing a path when I don't think there. Um, we're at that point where we're ready to.
I don't, I, I was actually going to ask, there's, there's, I mean, the, I assume the contract is for this pre-work, pre-bond work. Yeah, no more. And no more, and we will make a decision. Well, first of all, the bond has to pass. Um, and doing that work ahead of time. So we're not talking going forward with, uh, signing the contract for a hundred fifty million dollars or whatever it might be.
Right.
Uh, we're crossing a battle.
Great point. You know, when, when we sign a full design contract for school, it will have multiple phases within it. We'll have the schematic phase, design development, construction documents and permitting, bidding and construction, right? And then that big fee is broken out into all these sections, at which point there has to be authorization to move from one to the next. Um, I envision this as a much smaller contract, um, and. There, there probably won't be phases within this conceptual design, um, component to it.
I, I certainly appreciate you using analog. There's a different cost between, uh, writing a screenplay and shooting and producing the film. But that doesn't mean it's a binary decision of how, how fully fleshed out the screenplay is before you decide to shoot the movie. Right? And so similarly, when it comes to architectural plans before construction. I think there's certainly a range of how full blown those are before they're presented to the board. Um, and before like, I mean, just input along the way, right?
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting point and, um, let me think about it a little bit, whether, you know, because our, our intent would be to do. Um, you know, a lot of intense work with the staff at both buildings, staff and students and, um, you know, community members and booster groups. And all those people over, um, over the spring. And at the point, um, we kind of reached the end of that, we won't have made any decisions about what's going to be presented to you in. Um, in the fall, but there could be a point there where we, we include a board reading and an update. To ensure that you're comfortable with us taking that next step in the summer to, um. Further develop the, the options probably and price the work, um, before we come back and take the next stage with, um. With again, those people who have helped us create that. Um, so let me see if I could figure out how to work some steps into that.
Any questions or comments? No, not very clear. Okay, I'm sure there will be lots and we'll handle them on the twenty eighth.
Definitely. That's why we have that full hour ahead of time, just to, and that will be at the point at which you decide. It's not until in the meeting that you decide, so.
And if we're not ready to decide, we're not ready to decide about it.
That's all can do for the board, yeah.
Right. I mean, obviously it has an impact, but got to make the right decision first. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Brandy.
Alrighty, um, to C, parental governance, process monitoring, board policy eighteen hundred O E nine, communication support to the board. Superintendents recommended policy revisions to board policy thirty one forty one, enrollment non-resident students.
Um, so what we have brought forward here, um, and I think backing up, um, kind of where are we in process? And you heard a little bit, I think, in public comment, um, of wanting to know where we are in process. Ideally, on Monday, um, and for those of you at home, I had a medical issue on Monday that took me out. And I wasn't able to, um, present Monday night, but in, ideally on Monday, I would have been able to present to the community, um, the webinar. Um, trying to take into account, um, information I've seen online, whether or not, um, questions posed. Through Nextdoor or emails we've received or that you've received, um, but ideally that would have happened. And so tonight would have been, um, what it is, which is just approval of open enrollment changes to the policy. But not ones that have to do with open enrollment for off-island students. So where we are tonight is the changes that we've made on there, um, that we brought forward really center around a few things. One is, um, historically, there's been some ambiguity about whether or not open enrollment rests with the superintendent. Or rests with the board. So the first item of clarity that you'll see in the language is that the, the superintendent. And we left the language of April fifteen, will annually make a recommendation to the school board. By April fifteenth about whether or not, you know, the parameters of an open enrollment. The board then, you have the ability to either accept, deny, send back for further review. It leaves you in the driver's seat to be able to make that decision. Um, and so that's, um, item number one. Item number two is looking at, last year, we did some work for the city and, and tried to figure out. You know, ways that we can include city employees, um, and give them some benefits similar to our employees. Um, a group that we didn't necessarily bring forward and include then were our own coaches, especially of our athletic teams. But we do have some coaches, um, of some other teams that are more clubs and organizations who receive supplementals. Um, and we think that a great way to attract and retain great coaches and those people would be to include them in. And then we also thought about our substitutes and we have a number of substitutes who work. Um, you know, a number of days and hours each year in our school district. And we settled on two hundred and twenty-five. And the reason why we went with that one is that's essentially one day a week. If you're subbing here one day a week, um, uh, throughout the year, you're here, um, you know, on, or on an ongoing basis. Maybe it's a three month sub position, but you can also bring your students here. So that's really the parameters of the changes. The other aspect of the change of the policy is just reformatting and we rechange the formatting to make it flow a lot better. I think over the years, as we tinkered with this, we never really went back. And so thanks to Director Batterby, she really did a lot of work of, how do we really think about this in, in a better staging, if you will, rather than. Um, uh, haphazard. So that's really where we are, um, tonight and that's really what this policy is about. The next item on the agenda is me to kind of, a prelude to the next meeting, which would be my recommendation in terms of open involvement. But I'm going to stop there because that's really the next agenda item. This one is really approval of the changes that I just kind of described or discussion.
And, um, just to clarify, it's, uh, while they are employed, right? I mean, it's finishing out the school year. And then I assume for substitutes, it's, you know, eligible the next year until they don't qualify, basically?
Yes, it will be a little tricky. I mean, we're going to have some, some staff members who, um. They may not have hidden, hit those full numbers in that previous year, but they plan on coming back and they plan on committing to the district. And so our, our hope is that they plan to hit that two hundred and twenty-five day or hour mark. If they don't, then we reason of the right then to consider them a non-employee under this, under the perimeter.
And I assume legally that's fine as long as it's, it's not, I mean, as long as it's applied equally and not grouped. Uh, I mean, on a case by case basis, but. I saw him.
Yeah, just, um, and maybe I'm looking at the work, I'm looking at the, sorry. Um, the, the, um, with city, with, with. District employees, if the parent stops working here, the child certainly can finish out the school year. And then can they also finish out the grade band like, or do they have a possible option of finishing out the grade band?
And so that's language that we put in is that, that, um, upon becoming like a non-resident. That you can figure, finish that grade band of that you're in and that your kids aren't disrupted immediately. So if you've been renting and you just can't find a home and your kid's been here since kindergarten and now you're in second grade. That you'd have the option to at least finish elementary school, um, uh, from there.
Is that our policy?
That's not our policy.
But that's not this one, that's open enrollment.
No, that's this one too, because those are our current, those aren't, those aren't, um, students who aren't existing in our system. Those are actually students who have been in the district.
That's our current policy?
No.
No.
That's what's in this one that you have tonight. It is on page. The, um, I, I was.
I see under, um, other non-resident applications.
Wait, wait, I, I, I want to understand this.
So can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Erin.
Yeah, so, um, if you look under, uh, section, uh, B, I, I, so seven, other non-resident applications. Um, it has the prior existing categories of A, um, which relates to the open enrollment that Professor Dr. Myers and Mendel refer to. Um, and B, and then C and D. So those are all like past open enrollments. So, um, there's E, which is existing language. The, the district will basically allow the confused, get into your eleventh grade year, you can finish high school. You have to get one day in. And then beginning the twenty twenty-three, so this is the changed school year. Any non-resident student who is the dependent child of a city employee in order of that section, um. Has continuously attended district and who seeks non-residence for the remainder of that academic year. So that's where the employee ceases to be an employee. We're letting them finish. Um, it's the same thing with, um, a current eleven grade, uh, student. Sorry, I'm having to bear in mind that my computer answering is smaller up there, um, and it's not getting larger for some reason. Uh, so that's also allowing them, any current eleventh grade non-resident dependent of sitting employee, that's in G. And then for the termination, pardon?
Yep, you're right, on the H.
And then on H, if the agreement is terminated, they're allowed to continue the grade band. Again, this is H.
So wait, so, okay, so I read, that's why I'm confused. I read that as basically if our inter-local agreement. Ceases to exist, if we no longer allow city employees to bring their student here, then. Because we're changing our policy, we're going to give them finishing the grade band rather than the grade year. But that's not if they cease to be, uh.
You can keep going, keep going.
Keep going.
The I, I just haven't gotten there yet, sorry. Um, so they can, yeah, under I, basically it speaks to a district employee, a city, uh, employee. Or specifically defined contract employee, those are food service, employees of the, um, contract food service person. Uh, entity, if they are terminated or due to change in their parent's employment status, they no longer become eligible under their sub-section. This provision is designed to allow them to continue the grade band unless it's in the summer after their fifth grade year or after the eighth grade year. Because they actually haven't started the grade band, they just finished.
It's a question, would this be more favorable to at least these categories, city employees, than it would be with respect to residents? Like if I had a third grader and then moved outside the district, it used to me like the grade band.
That's J, that's J. So we, we basically made them parallel.
So now we're talking, okay, so I, I, I wasn't aware, I mean, totally support. Um, let me read the remarks, but I have prepared remarks, it's a complex issue. Um, that addresses what I do support and then I will elaborate because I was not aware of the grade band. But I have reservations given the length of the commitment, um, that that inhales.
But we're still asking questions, yeah.
Well, I, 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 I haven't been given the ability to speak publicly on open enrollment, so.
Where'd you totally gotten the discussion? You will get the opportunity, there's still more.
Okay, I, I think in the past, like, I mean, there's been emails from the board where I haven't had the opportunity to speak. So let me know when you think it's a good time for us to speak.
There's been emails from the board from you.
Not sure.
So what we had heard from your discussion the last time was concern about continuity for students. And that when a student was, um, the dependent of a staff member. And if that staff member then is no longer employed, we heard concerns from you that said. Wow, to just cut them off and then they can't come back to the school seems disruptive. Similarly, we have some students who have been part of the school district. They, you know, they might have not found a home or whatnot and by just removing them from the school. And so what this language in these that we tried to do was capture what you were talking about as a board, which was, or that we heard from. From board members, which was, how can we have a more gentle release or, or, um, exit from the school district? And we really struggled with, you know, if it's a second grader committing to them all the way through their senior year, seemed like a long way. But at least if we have grade bands, they could, if it's a fourth grader, they can at least finish their fifth grade year. Don't know if they would or not, but trying to create continuity for students is really what we were trying to do.
It's also disruptive for the staff, I imagine. But it's, but I just want to clarify, so with for, for staff. City, I mean, including them all and then coaching additional in the staff.
Yeah.
Are residents who might become non-residents, normally they can finish the school year, but no longer, but now it's so, it's treating them the same.
All the same, they would all be treated the same. No one would have an advantage or disadvantage because they would be a considered. They would have been considered a, an enrolled student. And we didn't want to say that, well, you were enrolled under this provision, so you have a more advantage or less advantage.
So it is a change, um, to past practice. So past practice, if we would let people complete. Uh, the term or year, whatever makes sense, um, whether they were a city, uh, uh, we didn't really have city employees. Uh, but whether it was a staff member who ceased to be a staff member or a resident who became a non-resident. As long as the student had been continuously, uh, attending, um, and enrolled. So this would be an expansion beyond that. The prior sort of, the only other thing that we had before, we always had the exception for eleventh graders. Because just an appreciation of the disruption that causes for people who are trying to advance into. Post-graduation activities, um, maintaining that. So if you get into the eleventh grade year, we're going to let you finish your senior year. We hadn't had an analog at the elementary or middle school level. And so this sort of creates that, except for it essentially says, no matter where you are in K five, you get to finish. Elementary school, no matter where you are, six, eight, you get to finish middle school, no matter where you are in high school.
Anyone who's been, who was a current legal student gets to finish their grade band, however you qualify as a legal student.
Yeah, as long as you maintain, like, you don't join a gang or there's sort of other things, right? Uh, so.
Those second graders.
Yeah, uh, so those type of things. So it is an expansion for how long someone can be, but you have to have started as a, of eligible student. Who was continuously enrolled. Um, so that's the expansion, but if you be, cease to be a resident. Or employee, city employee, et cetera, in between a grade group. So let's say it's the summer of your fifth grade year, you move to Bainbridge, you don't get to go from middle school because you actually haven't started that experience. Same as your summer for your, between your, uh, eighth and ninth grade, if you move off in that time period, you don't get to, to go all of high school. Because you haven't started that experience.
So then the benefit is our kindergarten families, sixth grade families and ninth grade families are the only ones that are, are going to have to submit those silly bills during.
No, you have to do it every year.
Right now, we do it every year because there's a residency requirement, but if there's no longer.
No, no.
No, you still have to, that's the.
Because you still, you still have to go through choice transfer because if you live somewhere else, you still have to go through the process. So we still need to know whether or not you're a resident or non-resident student.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's less about the bills, it's more about the process. You heard one of the public comment, um, talk about, um. That we would be exploiting students by just taking their money and then when we didn't want them, that we move them on. Um, what. Um what we're trying to do is actually. Treat all of our non-resident um students who are here on choice transfer, open enrollment the same. You have to apply every year by the state, if your parents have been here teaching or your your dad's been teaching here for twenty years. And you've been here since kindergarten and you're still in tenth grade, you still have to go through the application process with the state. And we we don't leave it up to them, we send letters, um you know, it it's a, it's a, you know, we're working together, so what we're trying to do is not to say. Um you know, you, that there's a chance you're not going to come back as much as it is, we have to just make sure we followed. Followed the choice transfer policies through OSPI because the the district actually has to release the student to us. It's not a guarantee, when they fill out the form, it goes to their home district who has to release the student, that has to happen every year.
And these changes were designed, and I understood it, to respond to a an expressed desire by the board, at least our understanding for continuity. There may be other ways that you want it, like maybe you only want kids, it, once they get one day into fourth grade, they get to do fourth and fifth grade, maybe that's what you want to do, I have no idea. Um but this was our attempt to meet the board interest, but this is obviously like, it's a draft. Well, watermark um to get feedback.
Is now a good time to speak?
Well, I wanted to ensure there's no other questions on the policy before we start having a discussion.
Can I check one more piece?
No, I think they've all been questioned, Dan.
Can I add one more piece, another piece that was addressed, there are two new categories here of person, people. Um before it was basically employees, it was a uh city employees, we had city employees in there. Full and part-time employees on contract letter assignment, limited letters of sign, those are just all our regular employees. Um and then those uh who work for our food service. Contract provider, those were all people that could come in irrespective whether the district was open to um open enrollment, right? What this adds are two pieces, which I think Director Glowitz referenced earlier, um which are coach, athletic coaches.
I started it with that, I started it.
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry.
No worries.
So is everybody on the same page that those are add, I'm sorry, it was a while ago.
Yep.
I just want to make sure everybody's in the know what else was changed, so subs, coaches and. Club supervisors could bring their kids after one successful season indoor year of doing that, or two hundred and twenty-five hours for substitute. After one year, after a year.
Did you have a question?
I I I just a quick clarification, so when you say uh the um you do have the choice transfer to the the school district and the OSPI. That will also apply uh not only for this section, but for open enrollment, it is the same thing, right? That I don't, so only which is.
Every term of the treaty.
Right, but it doesn't mean that that that. That the kids couldn't have a reasonable expectation of staying.
It's just knowing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It it also protects districts, and I'm not going to talk just about Mercer Island, but it protects all districts that if you get to the place where. You allowed some open enrollment, but you get a bubble of kids coming through and you don't have space. It does give you the opportunity to say, we no longer have the space, that's not very likely at all. Um and none of this, and and I think our students um and Ava Nasha, thank you so much for convening that group of students, but. They had some great questions about that, they were also protective of those students as well, based on your comments around. You know, we don't want to have a kid come and then say you can't come anymore, the goal is to try to keep them um as long as we can through this process.
Okay, um I've prepared a few short remarks regarding my position on open enrollment in order to communicate clearly. To the press and most importantly to our community, the public. First, let me be clear. I am confident that when we pursue open enrollment, we will receive stellar students who will enrich our schools. Second, I strongly support our staff. And our ability to pay a living wage to those who work day in and day out to make our school so strong. Over two years ago, as a newly elected director, I drafted a letter in support of financial stabilization. That was sent to each and every legislator in our state. In that letter, we asked for short-term stabilization in order to make prudent, long-term fiscal adjustments. And just last year, I vigorously and vocally spoke out for the need to preserve the regionalization rate. So we can pay a living wage in a high cost of living area. This common sense position helps secure millions of additional dollars in basic state apportionment funding in our district this year. And in the years to come, to the tune of roughly ten million dollars. As my position on enrollment stabilization and regionalization clearly demonstrates. I support pragmatic solutions to clearly identify challenges. Therefore, I am delighted that Superintendent Superintendent Rundle has proposed changes to our enrollment policy. That recognizes the important role of athletic coaches, club advisors, food service workers and substitute teachers. I have long believed that residency is not only the place where one sleeps at night, but the community where one works and contributes to during the day. By redefining residency, our community and our schools will be strengthened. At the same time, I remain skeptical that traditional open enrollment. Designed to defy long predicted demographic change is sustainable, equitable or beneficial to our district or those surrounding us. Declining enrollment appears to predominantly be an employment challenge, not an educational one. For the last seventeen years, our district has determined that the drawbacks of open enrollment outweigh the benefits. I do not believe that declining enrollment related to demographic trends changes that calculus. First, because staffing largely scales with students, the incremental revenue received for each non-resident student is offset by the increase in associated costs. This is why our previous experimentation with open enrollment was so brief, it simply didn't convert the financial benefits that we anticipated. Second, a look around at the large variation in high school enrollment numbers across our region. Quickly dispels the notion that there is a quote-unquote magical number. Of high school students required to offer compelling and challenging courses to each and every student. Even during years of steady state or growing enrollment. Our course catalog, which is driven in part by student interest, is constantly changing. With new courses being added as others fall off. And because it will always be classes with fewer students, there will always be an argument that additional students should be admitted to our district. Because they may potentially choose to take that those particular courses. But that logic leads to a situation of ever-expanding enrollment, where the appetite for additional students becomes insatiable. It also obscures the fact that we don't, as a policy matter, have a mandated minimum number of students required to offer a course. In fact, there is a significant variation in student to staff ratios among different courses. Which belies the notion that cutting a particular course is the inevitable result of declining enrollment. It is always a decision. Lastly, open enrollment will create systemic problems that are subtle, significant and ultimately detrimental. First, in the near term, I believe that if we accept non-resident students, that we owe those children duty to ensure that they're set up for success. That will necessarily place an additional burden on resources and focus that could otherwise be directed at meeting the needs of our current students. In particular, I'm worried about what open enrollment would mean for essential shared services like M I Y F S. Which are already straining under current demand. Second, once enrollment is decoupled from residency and any vacant seats can be readily filled with non-residents. I believe there will inevitably be greater indifference to the needs and input of the community and a loss of accountability. Third, by dislocating students from adjacent schools and districts, we will only exacerbate and magnify the same challenges posed by demographic change. And shift the burden to the communities that are least able to adjust. We live in a rapidly changing world, we owe it to our children and our community. To look at the common challenges which we confront with clear eyes and full hearts. And then, after careful consideration, figure out pragmatic solutions that benefit everyone.
So um this uh agenda item is speaking only to the current proposed revisions. Um we, because they're both called open enrollment, um preparing the agenda, we were really looking for a way to um. Make it very clear what we were discussing or improving today, so the policy discussion today is this current one that's in front of you all. And is not discussing the general open enrollment question of the proposal by Dr. Rundle for thirty through twelve. I'm not going to shut anyone down if they want to make statements about it, but um this is the agenda item and I would ask people to stick to the agenda item for the purpose, frankly, for the. The confusion of outside parties, I think they're two very, very different, um I'm going to go to everybody for for our thoughts. Um but but this is, it's, we we did this in this way on purpose, so that um, which Director Glowitz was a part of. But because they're both titled open enrollment, we wanted to be very clear that this is staff related. And current resident related, whether that current residency might change, it is not the proposal of the open enrollment for eight through twelve. We will get to that and have plenty of time to have those discussions. Um so that being said, um. Students, do you have any comments on this proposal or anything else you'd like to say?
I think this is a great proposal, allows for a lot of continuity for students, um especially like. As as you get older, like it gets harder and harder to switch, so.
I will say that I I I appreciate the effort to include other staff that uh have been more uh uh. Do have enough time, so I really appreciate that.
It's also, I'll piggyback on that, so it's an additional benefit to those staff and help make Mercer Island a more attractive place to, you know, if you're going to coach. You'll want to coach at the place that is more inclusive of your family, you know, and like shares some opportunities with you. Um I really appreciate the the kind of grade band. Um policy because um I can think of a number of scenarios in which it would be helpful for families, but also just help with the overall. Issue of of it being difficult to find a place to live if you're like a family with with young children or with multiple children on Mercer Island. Um my, someone in my neighborhood is is getting ready to sell their house right now, their last. Child going through our system graduated from high school last year, and so they're going to downsize and they're going to disqualify. Um and so I think of that family who have had like amazing kiddos like going through our school system and. You know, yes, they could have made this move when their kid was in, I guess, eleventh grade, right? But if they could have made it when he was in tenth grade, like that for their family would have been like a significant financial advantage to do it, to, you know, to make that move sooner. But it also would have freed up their, you know, freed up some additional housing inventory for a family coming in who has like three or four kids and. Right now can't find a place to buy on Mercer Island, you know, so I like that, I like that it's less disruptive because it is disruptive for not only. The child who might have to transfer, you know, sooner, but also, and and a lot of families won't take advantage of this because they'll be like. We're moving, we want our kids in the, you know, the district, whatever, but but for those kids who need extra stability, so kids who like. You know, have like quirky kids like my child. Um kids, kids for whom it's been a long process to figure out their learning style and put in place the support that they need and kind of like. Help them make friends, I mean, all of that, for them to be able to continue that until the logical end of the grade band when everyone's moving on together, that's really nice, and I think it's also. Nice for the for their classmates, like, you know, to keep the class together as much as possible, kind of like they go through, so anyway. I just, I appreciate the the work that went into this and how kind of carefully it's thought out, so thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, my primary concern with the existing policy was the year-to-year and the having to, the lack of like certainty. Um and I really appreciate the um responsiveness of Director Battersby and Superintendent Rundle with addressing that concern and um. I think this, the the grade band uh solution that they came up with is one that is equitable and fair and with. And and seems like, would reduce a lot, whatever, I would imagine would be the stress. Of having a kid go into a different school district and um not knowing if they're going to continue or not, once they've made that transition. Um so I really appreciate that responsiveness to our concerns as well.
And I'm sorry, can I just add one more thing, which is that um I also think this is, you know, a great way to potentially have. A little, a few more students in the district, right, like year by year, like a few students who otherwise we would be losing. And for people who are concerned about um, you know, the social integration piece of it, or like, you know. These families may not be as invested in the district, like these are families that we know, these are kids that are a part of our system already and that these families have been. Paying local taxes and been a part of our system for for, you know, years potentially leading up to this, so it's, it's, it's a low impact. Change, but I agree with that.
I I uh came to this meeting as my remarks suggest, um fully ready to support this proposal. Um because of the recognition that there's many ways in which people contribute to our community. I was not aware like ever of this banding um addition, which I think uh changes it, well, it changes it significantly. If you produce, you know, if you advise a club or review a substitute teacher for one year. And happen to believe that, you know, there's great resources perhaps in Mercer Island for elementary school. Uh and then box in a commitment by the district for an additional five years. Um so I remain fully committed without the banding. Um I think that we are going down a path, particularly for the long duration. Uh that was not, at least in my view, and I guess Deborah's too, was not sufficiently aware of. Um support keeping current policy with respect to eleventh graders. Um that are going to be a senior finishing out, um but I do not support the ban.
Where'd you get this draft at? This, this is the same draft that we got, obviously Monday.
Uh yeah, and this was the one that Deborah also, I guess you had confusion about banding, so I mean it was.
No, oh, I did have confusion about banding, but we discussed during agenda planning how best to approach these two separate issues.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, you know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, like, totally support this proposal without banning.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I'm I'm the one who asked about it at like some previous meeting, not 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 in those terms, but I was like, can't people, like, if they're moving off, can't we keep those?
Right, right, and there's, I think there's been individual questions, because I've asked questions, I didn't, I didn't ever see it in this way before. Um and I reviewed it before the meeting, but just, you know, it's. I I would love to find a way that we can like maybe have a chart that could be a little bit that someone could refer to, but. You did a tremendous amount of work and it is very specific, so I get it, um but I missed it, so um. My question, oh, comment on for the webinar, I think, and I had this misunderstanding as well, so I would assume that it's. More widespread, just based on my knowledge base, the oh, the choice transfer and the fact that our staff's children have, or have to apply every year. Is is not, it it's not easy to understand when you haven't gone through it. So when we see, um when we talk about the eight through twelve proposal. And and people's pushback in terms of, let's not, let's not shrink his alarm, I I frankly, I've discussed this, I. And and I couldn't agree more, and and I, and the discussion we've had is, we can't have that policy be different from what it is for our staff. And so, you know, I think that that uh. As if there's a better understanding that our staff fall under choice transfer. And that that application is every year with the expectation that unless there's.
A change in policy.
Change, well, not a change in policy, but it changes circumstance. District circumstance, like, there, I think there's a way to put it that it's more reassuring that un- unless we're making a significant change. Once you're here, you're here.
And maybe just a clarification in general that the um. That the yearly application process is not something that we can control or amend, but that's an OSPI thing. So that, so people know that it's not that, like, we're saying you have to apply every year, I'm sure we'll keep you for the grade band maybe, but like. We have, that that's something the district has to do, sort of like by law.
Yeah, but choice transfer is a requirement.
Right, so that, yeah.
It's not.
But it's not, so people still hear a year-to-year, every-year application, they're not. They're aware of that, what that means, that's not something that we come up with and.
So um seeing as this is um new to all of us, um I I think this was this policy alone. Um good discussion today, my proposal is that we put it on the agenda for the next meeting. So that we can get potentially feedback from our staff on how they feel about it and now that they've seen it and that now we've had a discussion and able to answer any questions. Um for a second, not not to um consent agenda, but for a second reading, is that?
Yes, I would also like to to request that we put on the agenda for an upcoming meeting to talk about this issue of um. Board members feeling like they're, they're not being allowed to speak or that they're, you know, the the whole issue that has risen about, risen about like. Who's allowed to speak to the press or who should be speaking to the press and blah blah blah, if we could just like, that would be great to have a conversation about that, but that's outside the.
Excellent.
Well, then you go send in board, hit us with that, okay?
Yeah.
Then, yeah, great. Um, okay, so we're going to put it on. Okay, so we're going to put it on for a second reading. We've heard some concerns about the grade bands. Um, and we'll move forward continuing our discussion on any concerns or positives or if people want to extend it.
So I'm not hearing, oh, sorry.
Well, and I want to just acknowledge this comment and I hear what you're saying and I I saw that you have to have like a certain hours and be committed to certain certain hours, but I do understand that if you're a have a kindergarten committed to the whole elementary, it might be a financial burden for us. So so I am curious about maybe asking the teachers as staff, um, like in terms of retention, what will this impact on kind of as a benefit? And also, what will happen if we disband elementary, like you know, lower elementary and upper elementary as a term, if that is something that they will have to be applied because they have been certain times and then like ensure the kindergarten to be secondary and then uh, the next one, if they're still here, we do the next one, but if not, they will have.
So like for this purpose only, there would be like two divisions of elementary?
Yes.
That's really interesting.
Lower elementary, upper elementary, that's a big thing, real school and high school. I think that it is, there is so short that if.
Like for second and third.
It's expanded.
Or K through from two and then three through five.
Yes.
Or whatever.
So so just asking, and I don't know, I think that is also something that the teachers may say that they will be very disruptive or not, uh, just as an idea of something that if the the teacher is still in the district, okay, they're going to apply for the second portion of elementary and if not, maybe it is time for that to be considered.
And it might be a small of that discussion also, given that only affects the the staff and and et cetera, um, you know, open enrollment or whatever we're calling it, um, then maybe just if we could have an idea of those numbers, we have come back to that discussion, like, you know, is that like four students, is that ten students, is that?
In terms.
In terms of the staff, you know, like the staff, the staff kids who are in elementary school, it might even be affected by this elementary school grade band, because we're not talking about open enrollment to other district students with no connection in the elementary school at all. So that's not, you know, it's not that there would be like eighty elementary school kids who's coming in and staying for five years, it's.
Yeah. Um, I can give you a little bit on that. Staff members, it's sixty students and I have it in a different one. Um, it's heavy into the secondary compared to elementary, but we can go back and look at that. The two hundred and twenty-five hours for a sub who did, you know, I asked Rosie and Aaron and the team and we really only have a handful of teachers, I mean, of subs who hit that mark. It's also a mark where a a sub gets an extra bump on on pay if they've committed to that many hours. Um, and it's fewer than, I think it's around fifteen who get that. And so it's not a high number and they don't tend to be people with kids in schools who are hitting those numbers. Our subs with kids in schools are not hitting two hundred and twenty-five hours a year. Um, so it's, it's not a large N, at least at this point. So we did look into some of those things. Um, Erin, you had had, you had kicked around a different idea um, around this grade band idea, which was more parity with eleventh grade at one point.
Yeah, so when I, when when we were first discussing, I was thinking in parallel um, to what the high school is like, after you start the first day of eleventh grade, you get to finish twelfth grade. So I was thinking the first, after the first day of seventh grade, you get to do seventh, eighth. At the first grade of four, first day of fourth grade, you do fourth, fifth, and we were going to do it at the levels. So it really limits it to those two years. The one piece that we haven't, um, just to be clear, this also would expand the grade band concept to resident students who then become non-residents. So it's not just that, and I don't know what those numbers would be, but that was the other option that I like originally was thinking of trying to meet sort of what I was hearing for some of the interest was to just sort of have that because I can see, I think that it can be challenging for students, both those who remain and those who leave towards those tail end of those academic experiences, um, to like suddenly leave in your fifth grade year when you've been there kindergarten, sometimes preschool through fourth. I I understand why it's more significant when you're in high school just because maybe not emotionally, but at least in terms of the impact, um, transferring, transcript, but that that was another idea. I don't know if it's of interest to the board. Happy to bring two versions to the table um, next time.
I'm interested in that idea and I'm also interested in Christina's idea of like for this elementary school dividing it into two mini bands, sub bands, half bands. Um, I don't know if anyone else is interested in that.
I'd be more interested to know if it's actually something that that's going to affect materially by numbers.
I mean, if it's, you know, if it's, yeah.
There's not that many elementary school students that would be possibly in the system, you know?
I mean, there's, I agree with you, that that's what I'm more interested in. I mean, if we're talking about like two students in, you know, five years, like, I don't think we need to modify policy around it if we're talking about significant.
Right.
I think it's also, um, the only part of this, and and I agree with it a hundred percent, I mean, we need our 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 staff and our residents need to be treated equally. Um, and I also think that um, my only concern with this, less so with coaching because of I know the number of hours that they put in um, versus an activity or club advisor. Some put in tens to hundreds of hours throughout the year and some don't. And so I don't want to go to nickel and diming and differentiating. Um, I just see potentially if someone wanted to game it, that um, that that could be where they game it on the, you know, but it, I mean, it's a lot of effort to send your school kid to a, you know, specific school, so that that's that's my hesitancy.
No, that's a great point. We talked about that too, Erin.
Yeah, so the way it's written is very specific for the those club advisors and activities that appear on our supplemental schedule. So these are all paid positions.
Okay.
As and same with coaching, it's a paid coaching position, so somebody who's been.
You can't be a volunteer coach and.
Right, because if you coach, you know, whatever the the turn up team, I don't want to get a team for two weeks and you grew a great turnout, yay, you know, it's not for that. And within that, if you wanted to adjust it, there are different categories of pay if you want to further narrow it, um, where you have like, I'm drawing a blank on what they're called, um, like the H O S A and the Decade Club Advisor spends tons of time versus.
C T O.
C T O, yeah, so there's C T O.
Robotics.
The higher end of our base schedule, that's another way you could do it, but it would be helpful if we are, if you are going to go down that path to link it to the schedule. So I just know things that are in here get that because otherwise it needs to be something that we can unilaterally apply without bias.
Right.
So things that happen to be on the more expensive side of our schedule generally reflect the amount of time and commitment it takes to do that.
So not of all, so not all of our club advisors?
Are paid the same.
Are paid, or are paid at all?
And some are not paid at all.
And then what about, and then we'll need to differentiate if they're paid by booster club funds?
No, it's just whether they're on the scale.
Because and then the school deals with the booster club and that, okay.
So it's just like if we've determined this is a position that we've negotiated on the schedule because that part does negotiate as well, the supplemental schedule, the the way it's written now, um, if you've completed that for a year and you but you you're anticipating to return, the district is expecting you, has offered you the position or is expecting you to return, then you can bring your kid. So you have to at least have done it. You can't just be hired and, you know, because we do know people will get hired and then maybe it doesn't work out and they don't show up. So you actually have to have done it, um, and we want it to come back.
So we'll have to, you know, sort of future of the banding question, but I do like sort of the bigger principle. I mean, I think this is a great leap forward and I think it will benefit the district and I think it's the right values, I think it's the right outcome, I think it's a pragmatic solution. Um, and then it's just sort of questions um, in terms of, you know, trying to limit any gaming and, you know, potential, um, and, you know, which can be costly depending, there are certain students that, you know, can be very costly to the district. And 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 trying to make it as pragmatic as possible, right? Um, but thank you for the work. I think I think it's the right step. Um, and yeah, I'm excited about it, but still questions on the banding. We'll, we'll, go ahead.
Just did we, did we as board want to ask for like two different versions then?
Well, I think, I think what that's what I was going to kind of summarize it with. I think the interests are clear that we're looking at inclusivity of our our people, um, equal treatment of residents and staff and um, and that I think if some, if people have strong feelings on decisions, reach out to, you know, shoot Dr. Rundle an email or whatever and say, I want to see this. I I would defer to, I think, do you guys have a good idea of?
You will probably have, we'll probably have a couple of different ideas.
Just so you can.
So.
And then and going forward, I just, we didn't normally do a red line, but because there were so much adjustment, you actually couldn't read it. Uh, you know, it's been really.
Now is my confusion, I'm like, where are all the red lines?
Um, but going forward, I can try to highlight um, the areas that are uh, content changes versus just.
We'll redline off of this one now that all the format has changed.
Right, so apologies for any.
Oh, no, 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 that's just why I was confused and when I was.
No, didn't, yeah, but I understand.
Yeah.
We'll try to not create that.
So I'm looking at both documents, I'm like, wait, where are the red lines?
Yeah, it was just because they looked like a.
It would have been a red.
Yes. All right, so we have a strategy for our next meeting. And then if you feel like there's something that you didn't get to say or have an idea, by all means, pass it on. Okay. To D Board Policy eighteen hundred O E nine communications board, for further discussion on open enrollment for non-resident students.
So this was originally going to be a, um, I would have given the uh, webinar uh, with a lot of different information for the community and for then us to have that conversation because it's backwards now. Um, you know, uh, we've already talked a lot about this and so there's not a lot of new information. Um, again, you know, I've tried to really lean into conversations, I've had coffee with some community members, um, and I'll follow up, um, perhaps with some who are here tonight, um, as well, trying to learn as much as possible. Um, in the end, um, I'm driven by a few different things. Um, first and foremost, our students, um, but also all of the O E's um, that you have. And the O E, the expectations for me have, obviously, there's fiscal responsibility that we've got to continue to make headway on. Um, that goes into our con balance, that goes into our daily operating costs. Um, what is the overall student experience? And when I'm looking through the lens of a student only gets one eighth grade year or one tenth grade year or one twelfth grade year, how do we both contract the school? Because you've seen the RIF resolution prelude that you got tonight. Um, there's no doubt we've got to contract the high school, um, because we have fewer students. There's no doubt that we have to continue to get better. There's no doubt we have to continue to try to attract families back to our school district who have left, um, and get them to return, to bring new families in. And then once they're here, how do we retain them? Um, and that's where I've been talking about attract, retain, return. What I will bring to you or intend to bring to you and then I'll just, you know, talk more about in the webinar is trying to keep it very narrow. Um, I don't think we're going to see this big ground swell of students who would come, but that it would be narrow enough, um, that we would be able to keep um, parameters around it and be able to help help our high school maintain program. So I'll have lots more for you on that. Um, again, tonight is out of order now and uh, but I do appreciate the flexibility in our community to postpone, um, not ideal, but that's where we're headed and do appreciate public comment tonight and listening to all of you and your different perspectives um, as we've gone along. And I'll take questions or.
Yeah, I don't want to open a can of worms, but um, the.
No, go ahead.
The, well, we hear this six thousand dollar person number thrown around it. I don't, I don't understand where it's coming from and what the impact. So can you, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, and Matt and Matt will, you know, can chime in as well. I've heard it presented from a couple of different perspectives. Um, in some ways, I've heard it as the sum total of um, the the two levies. Um, and if, though we don't collect on the cap tech levy on a per pupil basis, um, that will set off a property value, you can convert it. And that's what we tried to do is to convert it to um, what a per pupil basis would look like. The um, enrichment program and operations levy, that is a per pupil basis. So I've heard some describe it internally, if you put those two together, that's the dollars that we make up for students because the state doesn't fund us um, fully. So the state's funding us at about eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Our average spending on our students overall, according to O S P I line, is seventeen thousand and change. Is that on the report card on O S P I? On the report card. And so it's really, it's that, it's that dollar figure. Um, I looked at it a little differently than 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 some in terms of that. Um, you did hear and accurately stated, I think it was before Lederer Myers, and you talked about our E P and O levy is a set amount and we set that at twelve million dollars in twenty twenty-two when we went out to the voters. Um, at the time when that was set, it was believed that inflation wasn't going to do what it's going to do, um, and our downward trend in enrollment was twelve million was always going to provide enough capacity. In hindsight, it didn't provide enough capacity because even this year, we're leaving some money on the table, if you will. We're exceeding that twelve million dollars with our current current students. When we flat fast fast forward to next year, taking into account um, the inflation with the decrease in enrollment, we're still going to outpace that. So whether or not we get fifty new students in because they buy homes or twenty new students in from coaches and others, we're not going to collect on those students right now. And so what I've heard some people say is, well, then you're decreasing the total amount of money that's available to spend on each kid, um, because there's there's that delta. So I think that's part of a concern there. On the cap, uh, and so let me leave that alone for a second. On the cap tech side, um, I don't think it's quite as easy in my mind to say that there's a dollar per kid figure because, you know, when we're going to go next year to replace carpet um, at Lake Ridge, we're going to replace that carpet whether or not we get new open enrollment students from from teachers or whatnot, and we're not collecting money on that, but we're going to do that because the students who are there, a lot of the technology we've already purchased. And so some of these costs are ones that we already um, have in place um, going forward. For me, um, as I look forward, you know, school districts in this era, I don't think would be, continue to be open to enrollment, which all the districts around us are, if there was a benefit to a school district. And a lot of it at the high school level, um, as I work with Matt and I work with the high school, it's about economies of scale. And so I believe that when I look at the ability to bring in some extra students, they're not going to enroll. You're absolutely right, Director Glowetz, they're not going to enroll in the exact classes. But they bring in, if we're above our projection, they bring in that additional revenue that allows us the flexibility to offer some of those additional sections or not have the same reduction. So I think that's where some of it is. Um, maybe I'll turn to Director Sullivan first, he has a lot of experience with this, especially over on Bashan, where, you know, I think maybe they got to a different extreme, not going to ask him to opine about his former district by any means, but um, work you've done with school, with a school district and why districts do open enrollment, maybe just talk less about Mercer Island and just that perspective.
The only thing I can relate to regarding my tenure with Bash and I opened, and they opened open enrollment because of a situation regarding to program offerings at the high school level, but also financially. They believe that open enrollment would contribute to the overall benefit financially of the district. That being said, they currently, it's split twenty-one, twenty-two percent of their enrollment is from off island, specifically from West Seattle, about three hundred students come over on a daily basis to Bashan Island.
And, you know, I think the challenges, well, you know, I think there's challenges when you have too much of a percentage in there. Um, you know, when you start to have too many students and, you know, that's why I think it has to be limited. Open enrollment is not going to solve the challenges that are ahead with long-term, you know, decline in enrollment. Um, max matching our staffing with our with our students alone isn't going to do it. Raising dollars through the foundation isn't going to do it. It's going to, in my opinion, it's a lot of all of these different thoughts working together um, to kind of help. You were there in the early stages um, of the open enrollment and, you know, insights that you shared with me or that you would be willing to share um, around successes or or whatnot. I mean, I, and maybe I'm putting, maybe it's too much on the fly at eight fifteen at night too.
Right, it's almost a study session in this.
Yeah.
Um, I guess the blind spot for Bash on one is transportation. It was a deficit in regard to budget because of size of the island. It was a deficit in regard to budget because of size of the island, uh, ferry transportation. We'd have monitors on the ferry, we'd have bus transportation from the north end of the island, south end of the island to the middle of it, where the schools reside. Uh, initially, uh, finances were buoyed by open enrollment. That said, the number of students coming over, three hundred F T E, became a slight drain on the system because of the, the blind spots that we ran into, in particular with transportation.
And transportation for Bashon, you know, that was a choice that Bashon made because it would be really hard to get their kids go, to have that many families trying to carpool over on the ferries. It, transportation was kind of the only way to say how we're gonna get them. As a reminder, transportation, unless it's a student who has transportation written into um an individual education plan, is not on the responsibility of a district. It's on the responsibility um of a family. Um, I know of a district to the east of us that people drive up and over the pass, the Pauli Pass, to open enroll into districts. Um, there's not buses that go up and over. Um, families make that choice.
And there are some people that go from Bashon to West Seattle, right? Like.
Very limited.
Very few, yeah.
Very limited. I, I think we're in the, I lack, like seventeen, eighteen students or something like that. But it was, instead of like aviation pencil.
Yeah, to rent it.
Um, obviously, uh, Running Start, they jumped off Island and we didn't get that many anyway in regard to the F T E. Uh, there was obviously the choice of a private, in particular Catholic school, Bellerman, in particular in Tacoma also. But it was very limited.
We're only thinking about full-time, like, like one point oh F T E, F T S, is that correct?
Yes, um, reminder that we do allow um all of our students that you can take up to um fifty percent of your classes through My Online or something, and that's still as an option. They're still considered, you know, full-time students through our, our My Online. Um, a student could um go on to do Running Start um if they wanted. So you can't treat a student differently.
Right, right.
After they've arrived.
But going in, they can be a, they're best be a.
But they can't come in and say, well, but they can't, uh, would we say they need to maintain full-time student status? Uh, I mean, whether it's Running Start or A L E or like, can they come and just?
That is.
Take four classes?
That is, um.
Speaking of.
We're enrolling as full-time equivalent um students. So they would be a full-time student of six periods or more is the way that I would intend on writing. That's what I've seen other districts do is it's on full-time enrollment. That doesn't mean during the school year that they couldn't drop, but that means then the following year, you can't enroll as a, a part-time.
Because of the choice transfer.
Right.
Okay.
Now, there are plenty of ways to gain all of these systems and they all, people, as Director Prescott shared with you a couple meetings ago, we already have families who have found different ways to, you know, work the system under its current structures. Um, most people follow, I mean, most people it works for. There are a few outliers.
Big picture questions before the webinar?
I, I would say that I have been um intentionally reaching different groups that I would have not thought about uh or they have not come to us. And um the responses have been different than what I expected. Uh, so I will say to everybody that will watch the webinar, reach watch the webinar and reach out to us because I think that the opinions matter, but I think that once you have the whole information, then it will be easier for us and not to be discouraged uh to reach out to them because we, we would love to hear your opinions. I, I met with uh I M S P T A and, and all the middle schooler uh parents, some middle school parents about their opinions and the same way as S S L A D, salad. Um, and, and they're, they're mostly in favor of, of their opinions, but there were a lot of comments that were important. So um, I would, I, I'd love to hear their opinions because I think that I, as you know, switch kind of how I view this open enrollment depending on the different parts of the puzzle. So um, that is kind of pretty much what I need from the community. We cannot do our job. You don't let us know what they think.
And I, I think just to that end, it's um, you know, I, I can promise, I don't wanna speak for anyone, that everyone who is a decision maker in this wants to make the best decision we can for our students, for all of our students. Um, as well as potentially future students. So, and that's fiscally, you know, emotionally, opportunity, like all, everyone's goal is the same, is to make the best decision possible. So let's really focus on the issues, on the factual concerns. You can make data say anything you want, that's okay. And, and we're gonna hear the same data and come to some different conclusions, and that's okay. But we don't need to put people down or demonize because they might have a different opinion. We've all had different experiences and come from a different place. And um, and so let's just really work hard to make sure we gather as much information as possible so that we can make the best decision possible. And, you know, we can't predict the future. So whatever decision we make, um, you know, it's, when we say it's not binding, we don't have to make the same decision. Whatever it is that we do, we don't have to make the same decision next time. Um, and you, you also don't have to, you know. For me, it was interesting to hear, and, and I've learned in terms of calling it the choice transfer and having to reapply, you know, I, I've thought all along, I was like, I'm not okay with having, telling a kid they can come in eighth grade and then in tenth grade, oh, sorry, we're full. I mean, that's not, that's not students' priority. And so um, I, I mean, I appreciate hearing that feedback, but to me, that was a non-starter. We just haven't had that discussion yet. I'm just wondering if there's, I see you. I'm just wondering if there's, um, you know, after the webinar, we'll have further discussion on the twenty-eighth. Do, um, you know, we talked a bit about doing kind of a pros and cons list. Do you guys wanna take this discussion to a time where it's all we have to focus on? Or do you wanna do it at our next meeting? Obviously, after the webinar. And we wanna be able to get some um public input.
You could do Thursday, the twenty-first, after your linkage with the city. If you wanted to extend that and have conversation, then you do have that meeting.
Your webinar, though, is on the.
Twenty, nineteen.
Nineteen. I think, at least in my view, it would be good to begin the webinar for the community, to hear back to, you know, hear some different points of view. So I would say keep it on the twenty-eighth. Um, because otherwise, I just don't think there's sufficient time, uh, to Christina's point.
Well, I'm asking to make the decision on the twenty-first. I'm saying.
She's saying just more discuss.
I'm saying have it.
But, but the, the, the comments of the public do matter. I love.
Of course they do.
So, so I think that giving them more time.
Yeah.
Will be better and, and that.
No, the question.
I don't know, no, it wasn't.
It was, it was a decision that was just an extra thing for us, like.
I don't think we need an extra meeting. I think that's.
Okay, okay, okay.
But you know what would be really great? I think, um, uh, would be like an F V Q after the meeting if you don't have something like that already. Um. Because this, I keep hearing and seeing the same thing. I can't tell you how many people have reached out to me to say, I think it's really mean that you would, you would only let kids come for one year. And I'm like, that's not. When if it even happens, like, you know.
Which hasn't been discussed.
Right, even.
But no, it's.
Let alone.
It's bad, I mean, they were, yeah. Because of the word count for choice transfer.
That, so it's that, it's, it's not a, it's not a common understanding.
And we haven't actually had a discussion on what the intention.
Yes, yes. But I just, I feel like even, even having now had this discussion about it, it's still, people are out there talking to each other and it's like a game of telephone and, you know, so it would be nice to be able to just point people and say, here's like the top ten questions people are asking. You know, five questions or whatever.
And, and that's gonna add.
We're only five or ten.
Yeah, right. Thirty-eight questions.
But uh, adding to that and with what I was going to say before, um, with the presentation, the webinar, I appreciate it. It's due to a captioning, um, and especially hearing the last uh, um, public comment. Uh, I have heard that uh in the WeChat and Mandarin community, it had been a lot of discussions about it. So having a, a, we can ask questions that can be translated and we can do that uh will help of part of this um. I think that will help.
Yeah, and we'll have post-capping enabled for that. And it will be enabled and anyone, all you have to do is click that C C at the bottom, um, for the, is that what you're meaning by?
We do have, you can translate anything that's on the website now, but like if you go to the bottom right and like, it's like Google Translate basically. But um, that's new this year. So, okay.
Also, we did, just, just, just with, there is stuff that's available from the district in, in many languages. But um, when, when we were doing the superintendent search, we made a point of doing special, like Mandarin um language sessions. And actually, like after like ten minutes, I'm English, because the, the parents aren't feeling. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but, but like just we need to make sure that there's the need for it before putting effort.
And we do that as a matter of course on our webinar. There's always post-capping. We need to make sure everyone knows that there's. Yeah. Um. Okay, anything else? All right. So just to, um, one thing that I'm curious about actually is um the input that it was, I think, ninety-two students um from the two years and that was K twelve. So, I mean, I, we can't predict at all. I mean, we might get three, right? So like.
Although Bash and I would suggest that.
Well, that's, I, I'll say offline why I, I think we're in a different situation than that. But, but I'm not gonna say it publicly, but um, but I think that there's very significant differences between those two. But um, but regardless, I'm, I'm, yeah, it's, I, I wish we could send out something. Who wants to come and see if there's even a desire? Are we having these like long discussions over, you know, five to ten students? So we.
It's not the case.
I, I, I think that'd be a problem. I think that, I mean, I think, I mean, if we only get five to ten students, we decided to do it. I think it's a whole other can of worms.
Each and each years is not like a crazy number of students.
But that's K twelve.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so like.
But they closed it because the, well, the schools were overfilling and, and, but enrollment, we were in a very different situation. So anyways, yeah.
I, I think the numbers that will come in, I think we have to be careful about no matter what because A, our neighbors to the east who opened to enrollment um kind of for the first time in a while, they started in December.
Yeah.
Um, and other districts have been open for, for years. And so in terms of where we are, you know, some families may have already made choices to go to other districts or, or whatnot. Um, we are the lone district not open to open enrollment in the region. Um, and so I think that could skew things as we, as we start to look at this um going forward.
Is it possible to get, on a financial question, is it possible um with districts, they're similarly, similarly situated? They're maxed out on E P and O and they're open?
The N will be too small because.
Is there anyone? Riverdale, are they maxed out?
They, I don't think are on the. Um, a lot of those aren't on collection on the thirty-two hundred. They're not capped on the per student.
Okay.
And I don't know where they set their limits on their other side, but I don't know a lot of districts who are in our exact situation.
Right.
Director Loitz, you remember from when we were looking at the different um regionalizations and the history of max out in the E P and O.
Yeah.
I, I didn't look into that.
And one, but they're not gonna have the same. They're different, yeah.
Okay, just, you know, if there was someone out there, we could see what their experience was. It's more to learn. Um, okay. Moving on to, until next time. So just, oh, for recap, no decisions have been made. Uh, webinar is Monday at six thirty.
Tuesday.
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 I thought Tuesday the ninth.
Last time it was Monday. Okay, Tuesday the nineteenth at six thirty.
Listen to the communications from Ian because he's always right and I'm not. Um, and then. I, I, I readily admit that. Um, and then our next public discussion by the board will be May twenty-eighth, uh, March twenty-eighth, where the goal is.
To make a decision.
To make a decision without binding us to anything. If, if we're not ready to make a decision, there won't be.
There's, the only decision that has to be, the only thing by policy that has to be done is me to make a recommendation by April fifteen. So I've, we've been talking about this long enough, you know, so we're all in compliance.
Right.
It's so, there's nothing binding on it.
But just so everyone knows, that's the goal of the board at this time, is to have a decision on March twenty-eighth and um. That's it. So please continue to uh provide input and.
And, and the goal in part to have a decision by then is because of the other stuff that we were doing tonight, looking at like RIF authorization and, you know, I know people on RIS, the high school. So the sooner, the sooner people know one way or the other.
Yes, that is one of the huge factors, yes. Um, okay, uh, consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
So.
Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye, students?
Aye.
Uh, board?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Uh, two zero five zero and superintendent announcements?
Um, no announcements beyond what the bar debate.
Uh, board announcements, inquiries and reports, legislative report. I have a minute.
We're really waiting on the, it's probably two weeks until we really know what, two or three weeks before we really know the impacts of the legislation from a dollar standpoint.
Or the lack of impact.
On that one. Um, so if you're looking for dollars or for a few weeks out before they're gonna be able to figure out some of those.
Real quickly, and I know I've spoke with Deborah and Fred on it and maybe some others, but fifty-seven eighty-nine, uh, Mark Mullet, who's now running for governor, proposed. It would have eliminated the school construction, taxes on new school construction. If you participated through the School Construction Assistance Program, uh, flew through the Senate. Fred and I had discussed, like, my question is, why is it tied to SCAP? Um, Representative Talon from Issaquah had some very pointed questions um for a House appropriation where subsequently died. Uh, the questions, which echoed my own, which are why tied to SCAP. It looks like it just excludes a handful of districts, including our own. Um, and so I think on the positive side is there's an opportunity next year in a full legislative session to get traction on this. I mean, just make it broad, don't have to go through the red tape of SCAP. Everyone gets it. You're not trying to eat the rich tax, which essentially is what it was. Um, when you're excluding everyone except for a handful. Um, and then be real dollars. Like whatever we think the scope of a reasonable bond proposal is, ten percent is a lot of money that saves taxpayers. So uh, I think for me, that like individually, that's the top of my list of what I think is doable uh and meaningful uh for this upcoming year.
And though I had a quick question, if you don't mind, President. Just a question on that, um, because I lost track in our conversations back and forth. I think you just answered it. What you're, what you're thinking, Director Loitz, is it's, and it's untethering it from SCAP such that there's basically no sales tax on school construction.
Correct.
It's not, it's not based on any formula or whatnot. It's just straight across.
Yeah, because what was proposed, it wasn't even proportional in formula, it was just like, once you like get in SCAP, you receive a dollar from SCAP, but then you would get, everything would be eliminated of the sales tax. Unless you're grandfathered in, and there's twenty-one districts who ran school bonds in this Latin February cycle and seven passed. And then adding to the mix, if you just happen to be one of those seven districts, then it didn't matter.
Well, and there's a period of time that you can't reapply if you received it. And so certain projects don't even count. And so there are a lot of, so you said red tape in there. So I just was.
Yeah, yeah. So it seems for the House, like there may be an appetite if it was just, you know, simple, no, no tax. Um, I mean, certainly there was in the Senate, and so I think it's something that we should sort of, you know, find out more. Um, and then, you know, individually have those conversations with state legislators. Um, and, you know, do something, you know, that would have significant benefit to our community. Unlike electric buses, which is a separate conversation, but you gotta have buses apparently that are no, that are at least as old as two thousand and six or two thousand and seven, which, you know, sort of like SCAP, like just cut us off. Um, so I think, you know, sometimes you have legislation that would naturally be supported by people from Mercer Island, but it seemed almost punitive um in how it's designed to exclude us. And so, and that's something that I think I was amiss this legislative session, including those who sponsored it. And hopefully it'll be around the next legislative session.
And I think we'll have to ask some questions around, you know, the revenue piece and how to get out ahead of that and whatnot, so.
Um. It is the, it is kind of the time of year most soon, as soon as everything's signed and all that. During interim where we do have the best opportunity to make an impact and build coalitions. So um, you know, we can talk about, we have a lot on our plate, but we can talk about um, you know, you talk about if we wanna sit down and kind of do, hit a couple priorities. And um, you know, we've heard that they're gonna be talking about prototype school model. I'll believe it when I see it. But um, you know, with. I believe it when I see it, but um, you know, with, I was at the PTA council meeting this weekend, um they were talking about advocacy and really starting to develop positions um and approve, approve positions um so that they can hit the ground running and really start to advocate um as as groups. And so um I think it would, you know, we saw last year the impact that that the coalitions of all the education, at least most of the education organizations going in with the same priorities of special education and school construction and those were the main ones. But um but but it really was effective. So with our staffing partners and um and and our parent partners, um if we want to talk about even, you know, building up Mercer Island Coalition or even with the city and and the transportation issues that they're facing now in terms of infrastructure, um I don't want to get too much into it, but but now is the time to be having those conversations. Um and they tend to give us aside because we're overwhelmed with other things. So if we want to do something, now's a great time to do it. So I would encourage if people have the appetite to, we could start talking about how the committees are to um bring proposals to the board for, you know, that issue. If you want to partner with the city on the infrastructure, if you want to have partner with MIA and and the PTA about prototypical school model and special education funding or whatever it might be, that was. Uh board reports.
Uh so it's been a long time since our last meeting, so I have two minutes of the AI. Um and I'm pretty much uh uh just there restructuring uh their their uh PPI and the PTA, uh so they're in discussions on on things are are looking there for their own internal analysis report. So um so we'll look, we'll look into that. Um and we had the spread, the what is the? I'm so sorry, I I have all this. Uh no. Uh so um.
Yeah, the beginning of February, right?
Yes, so um uh that it's it's just been forming a small group within that group to move move forward on on what the spring recommendations can have uh take to be and um. And besides that, I think that it has been only community. Oh, yes, thank you. So I think that's it. I'm sorry, the the during the market fair, New Year's, the Ecar students have been a very instrumental in doing uh this work and make this visible and and even uh moving forward, uh we'll talk to the legislators uh to pass appeal and our students have been a part of this competition and great. Okay, so I'm gonna send you uh each one a Cory book. Actually, they were short, I was short because I had a stock in the house. But we'll we'll frame the others. Uh but there, these are stories of uh of different uh A and P in the region after have are important and influential on our history. So um we'll share it and and um. And um that's pretty much it.
Sure. I have much less than I have been to um the Lick Ridge Park and the Westminster Park and um like I said, it went to the Cidix class, which is always a pleasure, but lovely seniors with really interesting things to say and asking good questions. So, yeah. And I went to the Ecar Fair and I went to see Little Women, which was amazing. Like, I was blown away like that. Like, I was like, how are they gonna fit that whole very, very, very long book into just like a couple hours? But we did it. Love.
And did you have something you wanted to add to the agenda?
That we talked about it already, the the uh.
You mentioned it.
Oh, yeah, yes, sorry, just yes. So thank you. So um I'd like to add to the agenda for next time, talking about um kind of our our board uh policy on kind of, you know, speaking to the press.
Yep, BP one zero zero five and um how that point, yeah.
Exactly.
You first.
Thank you.
And bringing in an expert on that.
Yep, we can bring in um someone to help facilitate and and provide um guidance on that. I think we're gonna have our work cut out for us next week.
Yeah.
Because we've got to really shape an agenda that's shaping up to be really long. And so we're gonna have to, well, I'm gonna do some thinking over the weekend. I'll try to come with some ideas.
And I'm wondering if that's actually, I mean, I I want to, would, I I think that's a great idea and would love to do it sooner than later. Um I'm just wondering if it's more of a study section. I don't know that we have time to pull it together before next week during our city linkage, but um I have a hard, well, I have a hard stop next week. I actually was, um I'm not trying, I'm not skipping, but um I am doing a college visit and leaving Thursday night for an event on Friday. And so I literally just pushed my flight back to nine o'clock, but that's the last one of the night on Thurs- on the twenty eighth, but I thought I. No, the twenty eighth.
Okay.
So for our next meeting. And so I um I had actually intended on leaving early and being remote, but there's just, I want to be here. So push that back. So my hard stop's gonna be like seven thirty. Um but that's my stop and then it can.
So we have the twenty first, right, is the um link, the city linkage. So just, you know, I'll be on soon for that.
So.
I will pull together kind of thoughts for us next week then to look at that agenda because we have a fundamental and some others. So we may need to push some things.
Okay, um I went to the PTA advocacy meeting, uh which is all completely OBE by now because uh it was mid-session and now mid-session, no session's done. So um they were talking about things that happened. And um I went with the high school band to the Allstate competition in Yakima. Um we had several band students who qualified for Allstate this year and uh it was so very impressive. They had concerts in all over Yakima. I mean, there were like five locations. It was a lot. Um but our Michigan students played very well. Um there is an upcoming uh, yeah, it's basically a thing of Allstate concert. And then the Montreal team had finished up their season, I would say, and on the second tournament team.
Yep.
Um and uh did not win, but did well.
Um I went to a, just as an individual parent, uh to a total middle school, um the middle schoolers uh had, I think it was both band, choir, orchestra as well. Uh it was it was awesome to see and to see uh just all the passionate um, you know, musicians at a middle school level from across the region. And then there was Nor- I think Northwood Park was, it's been so long. I had Northwood Park. Um one of the things that came out of it, there was some questions about testing and for those parents at the elementary level who don't want their students to be tested for uh the highly capable program. There's always opportunity to opt out. There's some confusion about that. And then uh there was just um some interesting, and I think like some progress about um for the book fair and for those parents who either forget or don't put money on a card and just sort of the way in which to do it to everyone has a book with making it as seamless as i- as as possible. Um and I think it's sort of great. It was just, you know, putting the book on the shelf on hold um along with everyone else because frequently like, you know, kids don't have like the, they just put there and then they get the book and it makes it easy. Um and there's no sort of question to why someone got a buggered in. Um so it seems like it could scale to element, other elementary schools. And I think that's it. Um, yeah.
Um, I working backwards, uh did go to the assembly at the high school yesterday. I heard about it last minute. Um just, that's just what I heard about. Um and it was awesome. It was um, it really was one of the best speakers I've seen, Vicky. Yeah, so I mean, you know, I mean, you know, they they recorded very accurately, but but talking about, you know, his experiences as a student uh with autism, um growing up here and then and just his experiences socially and academically in ways that he related to people and could communicate. And then um to, you know, as an adult in a career and and the first autistic actor play and autistic part on Broadway um and talked about.
Incident of the dog in the nighttime.
That, yes, he is, it's it's this play, I've never heard of it. It's this play with a really long title. I mean, I've heard that there's a play like that. I just could never tell you what it was.
Yeah.
Um but talked about, um what was so, I thought so great was was number one is talking about experiences in high school, both socially and academically. And then um and then.
Did he go to Mercer Island?
He went, graduated from Mercer Island in two thousand and seven. Um and so then talking about, not only did he get the part on Broadway, but he um, but the advocacy that he had to do in the education he had to do in order to get the part and and convince them, no, actually, someone with autism can't close someone with autism, you know. And uh and anyway, so he just, he talked, it was a really great story. It was a really great experience and um and I, with their art students, I've never seen them more polite and engaged at an assembly. You tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, maybe they have been before, but they very much were. And I heard the same feedback he spoke at the middle school earlier in the day. Um so thank you to our PTA, our uh so solid people and and I know Director Booby um assisted with that too. I'm sure there were others and I just don't know who they are. So I'm sure Foundation and I'm sure others, but but great. And a great message for our students really about belonging. Um and what do you title it? Uh our differences are. Maybe what we remove the world like. Like, it's, I mean, basically talked about like his differences or his superpowers and, you know, just a really great inclusive message that everyone can benefit from. Um I went to the uh reflections celebration. Dr. Ron Millow got to take pictures with all the, we spoke to the students and the winners of the of the local. And then um took pictures with everybody and when they got their trophy, it was very cute. And um and he, Vicky would bend down with the little guys and then they would bend down.
It's just cute.
And then um we had, I heard it, our, the PTA council meeting yesterday that there were three, there are three students, five students placed at state from the district and we were going on to nationals. Those numbers are right. Um and for art, you mean? Or reflecting, sorry, did I say reflecting?
You did, correct. You did, but then I didn't know.
Yeah, no, for indifferent, what was dance? Do we are?
Uh composition, what was a piano composition and one was visual arts.
Yeah, so a variety. So our students were doing really great things. In addition, I regret that, but we added it through yesterday in terms of the national stuff. Um. Uh. Briefly, super briefly, I was gonna like write something and then I just ran by the time, not that it wasn't important. Um there's a lot of misconceptions and misinformation going around social media and I just want to encourage us all to um model our behavior of respect for different views. Uh there is, for some reason, individuals who think that that misrepresenting my positions on things, first of all, that it matters, because it doesn't matter. It matters for the board does. And second of all, they're wrong and they couldn't be more wrong. And it's offensive and it's hurtful. And I think it does a disservice to our students. And that's actually my primary concern. It's distracting, it takes time, and then it riles people up. And that's the last thing that I think we need. I'm specifically thinking, talking about the the few people on Nextdoor and I'm I'm not gonna call them out by name, but I will say that's where it is. Um I'm not on Nextdoor, but recently was brought to my attention by several people who came directly to me, which I so appreciate to say, hey, we heard this really weird thing that you want to take away AP classes. That can't be true, is it? Well, no, it's not true. I've never said it. I don't think it. I've never thought it. And I won't think it because our fundamentals, it's a violation of our fundamentals. We believe our kind of, one is personalized learning and our second hi- fundamental is the highest learning standard. So anything that the board, when people ask me what other board directors are thinking, I'm like, I don't know. We have discussions in public, but it isn't necessarily their views. They could be asking questions that they understand, but they're asking for the benefit. I would just ask that we all keep in mind that we're here for our students. I know I'm not lecturing anyone because there was no one here that had anything to, I hope, had nothing to do with it. But um but uh, you know, I think that we can really model the behavior of making sure that um we're not speaking for each other. We're not speaking for other people, that we encourage people to go directly to the source if they have a question. Um I want to see, we can talk about it another time. It's getting late. I want to see a review on our advanced options. When we did the APs, that was years ago. There's more options now. I want to know what colleges are thinking. Um we see, we hear fewer and fewer students getting credit, that our students are being told to pay for these tests and then they're not getting the credit in college. I want to, I want to see, and we've got not right now, we have enough on our plate, but an overall review of accelerated options for our students and what's the best one. It's not a it it very well might be college board AP and it very well might not. So.
Other things.
Well, yeah, well, and it might be other things plus and keeping in mind that we're one high school district and blah, blah, blah. So anyways, I want to review, that's our job. It's our responsibility to make sure we're offering the best things for our students. I realize that, and I've been very clear on this, but you know, someone takes it and runs and then puts it into everything. So let's just try and keep our district, you know, we always have room to improve, but um everyone here, they make decisions that with our students as the priority, which is um was part of that value vision emission. I'm really proud of it and I believe in it. And if I didn't, then you guys would hear about that too. Um that I didn't believe in it and would wish for a change. So anyways, that's just kind of a, as we tackle these difficult conversations with open enrollment, there's, people are going to feel strongly as our kids, we're making decisions about our kids. And let's just assume that everyone has the opinion they have with the in the best interest of all of our students at heart. That's it. Oh.
You know, we actually forgot to say this in our report and I think it's pretty important. So it was gonna talk about the new summer school.
Mm-hmm, like, yeah, so they just ran a survey, like they basically changed the summer school policies. So now they're having like summer school happen for like, I think, three hours a day for six weeks in the summer instead of like before, since COVID, we've had it. It was like, oh, you meet online for like five minutes a week. So they're trying to increase the amount of time you need to like spend on like a course while taking it over the summer. So that's just a change for like PE health courses. And it's just like a little bit harder for students to get like credit over the summer. Yeah.
The only caveat to that is nothing's changed yet. That's part of the survey is trying to gather feedback from different people. We have a confluence of things kind of happening right now with respect to our health and PE courses and um how much are we really um meeting the high expectations that we have versus are we just allowing students to come and and check a box and get credit? Um and so we're having conversations around that. And so that's the survey.
Yeah, we can discuss about putting that on an agenda because I think you bring that to the attention. I know that like it's a practical factor, a big change, particularly in terms of where, you know, what people, students are doing in the summer, on how they may fit into their schedule. So I think it's something that Deborah and I will discuss. Um I think probably on the agenda sooner rather than later. So thank you.
When it was summer school enrollment?
Um it usually starts in April. Um and so I don't know if the committee will be at a place where changes are ready to be made for this coming summer or not. I mean, a big thing is um, you know, what, it it's everything from directed studies um and how are we giving credit or how are students earning credit through directed studies to our summer school offering and what does the health credit look like versus the PE credit? Um and, you know, the the parameter I've definitely set is that summer school has to be an option to acquire those credits. Um that is a place where we know our students like to come in, um get credit for courses so that they can free up time in their schedule during the general year. Um where we have, I think where the discussion is, is what is the rigor that we want in some of those courses and what are the expectations around PE and health? And are they commensurate with our directed studies or our PE courses? Um you know, and I'm sure there's a wide range of offerings.
When it was online, I take it, and maybe this is for further discussion, but it was ALE. Uh in terms of funding.
No, when it was summer school, what the online piece um that they're talking about is how much she, do you come like, do you come into school versus Zoom with.
No, I get that, but I'm wondering, or maybe there's, maybe it's separate and maybe it totally, but from a funding in terms of what we get from the state and maybe because it's summer school, like parents pay, I don't know.
Parents pay.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I'm guessing.
Uh presumably then like would the cost be the same or would be it be more? But I mean, I guess that's the reason you needed, that's the.
That's a good session.
That's the reason summer school is a break even because we're we're not funded at all. So we're trying to keep it.
I think there's a lot of dimensions that have huge effects. So like, we'll get it on the schedule, yep.
But but what what are we getting on the schedule? Because that sounds very operational to me. Like, I'm just curious. Like, are we just wanting to hear about it? Like, what what are you asking?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, from what I've heard is that it has a real impact on students' ability to free up courses that they want to take. You know, during the course of the year. And I mean, yeah, we want academic rigor and that's what I think it facilitates when there's more. The pro forma boxes where there may be important information, not like information that can be learned in an online environment more readily.
I I I'm just asking, what is it you want to put on the agenda?
I want to know like in terms of this change, if something, I I think something the board should hear about and discuss because it has a big impact on high schools.
Speaking as a person whose kids took all of their P E online and like a lot of other classes, like over the summers. Like I just, this this change sounds like they're actually like holding kids to some standards. Like one of my kids bowled for his PE credit. When he did like online bowling class and like he went to a bowling alley and bowled, you know, so I'm just saying like.
I'm a W I A A sport.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's true.
But their question is, do we give directed athletic credit or everything just because it's a W I. And I think that's what we're trying to do, to to be, to make sure that it is not mixed up at all. Offering the option for summer school is not going away. There will be options for earning credits to free up. Time and schedules during the during the school.
Which is great and and kids are so busy, like so like between like all the extracurriculars and AP classes and honors classes and. Projects, some college applications. Like I super appreciate having those options, but I'm just, I feel like this is something we can hear about in. Like when we hear from the high school, the next time they go about their supers, like I don't see that it's an urgent thing, given everything else we're trying to get on the agenda. Like, I don't feel like this is super urgent.
I would be interested to hear like what you had anticipated, Dr. Ronald, with. Like reporting to the board, feeding back from the board or or is this something that that you would consider causing sort of the operational? You've told me where to put the ship and I'm steering that direction kind of. And brought or what do you, what were your, what were your thoughts?
I mean, summer school has been kind of this thing that's existed on. Largely kind of out in the ether, which is partly the problem that we've run into, which is that we have people who are teaching PE that. Aren't even PE teachers or checking in with students or. Health, health curriculum and we're trying to really bring in like what is it to to earn that PE credit or health credit? Are the students getting all of the learning, you know, parameters along the way? And so it's really trying to, you know, bring that back. Back under. In terms of major programmatic changes, if we were eliminating it or or getting rid of it, I would absolutely bring. That, I mean, you would have already heard about that. We're not eliminating anything. It's really about what is the scope and sequence of the courses. That are going to be offered during summer school.
And and separate from summer school, there's the the program where students get credit for being, say, on the soccer team or. On the mountain bike team or potentially in the marching band or whatever. And that's a separate?
That's directed athletics.
Directed athletics. So when you say summer school, you mean like summer playing directed athletics when we're talking about this topic?
Yeah, summer, so directed athletics is you're doing something else and getting PE credit. Summer school PE is I'm actually earning my PE credit, a PE credit by doing PE during the summer.
Which is basically how, correct me if I'm wrong, how how it occurred during COVID where they're. Online and logging, they're logging hours and then they maybe check in with the teacher who again isn't necessarily a PE teacher. And they're like, oh, I'm for a block. That's my, and there is walking for fitness. So what's not with that? I think the point is to make it sure that it's. Right, but but I mean, but that's a little bit. I mean, that the summer school and and the rigor of like, you know, where people don't, with summer is a completely different conversation. Also, I was like. You know, my son's on the high school soccer team, does he get his PE credit, half credit for that? As they do now. And, you know, like in our, like, is that gonna change or are the teams that are. Involved in that budget? Like that's, I mean, it's.
I think maybe what I'm hearing is as the committee starts to formulate some of their. Recommendations or whatnot that, you know, there could be an update. O E ten has a May update anyway, where we update you on different program reviews. And so it already fits into an O E in terms of here's where we are with that program update. So it could fit in that as well.
I mean, it's up to you guys.
No, I just thought it's bad. It would be very interesting to maybe survey the seniors that are already banned. Because usually banned students to, they cannot take blocks. Or because their skill is a little more difficult, so they do like to have PE in the summer, but they do have banned camps, so then they don't have summer and students do need a break. So consider that and and maybe ask those students, what would you have like? Or maybe maybe they will have four weeks and two or three weeks camp in the in the marching band.
Well, and duration still, yeah, that's a great point too. Duration's still not gonna change. We've always. Stretch the limit a little bit where we only have, I think it's five weeks that are the in-person, five weeks, is that right? And then the rest of it is all asynchronous for teach, for students to do independent study. They have to turn in assignments by the end. Of the summer, but they're not required to be coming in. It's really, it's the five weeks and some of them are just, you're coming in for one day out of the week. You haven't been coming in.
Think our students will be the first to admit that they know how to game the system. And I think the whole point is, and I agree with you, when I was in band here. We got a quarter PE credit for every quarter of marching band that we did. So if you did marching band for four years, you got a credit. Your your one PE credit. And so. I certainly am open to other alternatives. I don't have a strong opinion on any of it. I think the point is, is that. We're gonna offer it as a course and give credit for it. Let's actually make it a course. That's and how it's set up, I mean, it still could be somewhat independent if they find that there's a way to do that without gaming the system, I would imagine.
I mean, our our middle school, we're gonna continue where, you know, we're pretty much the only district that allows it to waive a PE credit in middle school. But we do that so students can take a language or they can take. Their, take band, orchestra.
Or a couple math courses.
Or a couple math courses if they wanted to. But the main piece is. We're still gonna continue to allow that, but we're gonna have a stricter schedule that you have to report out on maybe your actual minutes in your lawn versus just. I'm gonna waive it in one signature. Really, you know, it's something that the state wants to see that students have. If we're gonna waive it, then what are we doing in lieu of it?
And for the directed study or what I've heard for the sports teams is making sure that the coaches are. You know, teaching the other parts rather than, in addition to the physical activity. If there are standards, they need to use those standards. Regardless of whether they're giving the credit.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Anything else you want to talk about now?